Good morning. The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, July 11, 2017 is now in session. Let me start off with a reminder that all conversations should be taken out of the room. It's very difficult for us to hear with the echoes and the acoustics in this room. In conformance with the open meeting law, this is to remind you that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be available online subsequent to this meeting. For those of you who are here for the first time, and as a reminder to people who have been here before, please, when you are here to speak on a project, put your name and address on the record. This board makes an independent decision. We take advice from the B.R.A. and from the community process and from the mayor's office. So use your opportunity while you're up here to give us new information. If there is no new information, just put your name and address on the record. Finally, can you please make sure that your cellphones are off so you're not disturbed? Thank you. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of June 27, 2017. May I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the first case on extension, Case BOA 384-030, 223 Boston Street. You could come up here, ma'am.
Oh, I'm up.
Name and address for the record, please.
223 Boston Street, Mitsuko Ernst, that's the owner. I'm Andrea Willett, CBI Consulting.
So tell us why you're here.
We are here to request an extension to a variance.
Hasn't this been approved more than two years ago?
Yes, May 27, 2015.
2015?
2015, so we're about a month, a few weeks over the date.
And why are you asking for an extension?
We were asking for an extension because we'd like to move forward with the project. It took us a while to get a bid that was acceptable to the owner. We went through a bidding process in the spring of 2016. It was very hard to get a bid at that time. The number wasn't satisfactory, so we started the process again this February. And we just completed the contract process with the contractor and went to get permit.
It wasn't a big project, was it?
No, it wasn't a big project. But we really wanted to be on budget.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for one year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for one year.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, go for board final arbiter. Case BOA 427-838, 8 to 12 Enterprise Street, and Case BOA 427-843-14 Enterprise Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is James Rudser, and I represent Enterprise LLC, the applicant.
Please tell us what's being proposed and why you're here.
The basis of today's request is that the board had previously approved a fourth floor and deck for this structure, the deck being, a roof deck being 12 by 16 and a fourth floor being 16 by 18. We're asking the board to approve a slight revision to the plan to reduce the size of the deck from 12 by 16 to 6 by 16 and slightly increase the size of the proposed fourth floor, an additional eight feet, making it 28 by 16. The board had previously granted relief for FAR, and at that time, the relief that was requested was for an FAR of 1.8, and the additional square footage would increase the FAR from 1.8 to 1.9.
Well, that sounds to me that it's, since we did have a cap on it and our plans were approved, it sounds like this might be actually more appropriately here as a new appeal. Because we've basically capped the FAR at 1.8 on our approval of the plans when you were here before us. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, not so much a question, just as a comment. My concern is that the notion of board final arbiter is getting out of control. Board final arbiter is not to redefine previously defined decisions. It is to take a look at the minimus issues that come up oftentimes in the design review process or publicize, but when, this is simply client-induced. I mean, you're the architect, you're the developer, you came before us, we approved it, and now when you have a better idea or whatever to add more square footage, hence more value to the project, I simply do not feel that a board final arbiter should be the good place for that.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling G-Cod, calling the first case for BOA 710-429, 237 Marlborough Street. Is Marlborough Street here? We'll hold that one. Oh, you are here. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jonathan Barrett Parks, 237 Marlborough LLC, 60 K Street, Boston, Massachusetts. I am here for Article 32 G-Cod approval. I have the compliance from Boston Water and Sewer Commission.
Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christian Simonelli Groundwater Trust, we do have the approval letter from Water and Sewer, and they are on compliance.
We don't have that.
May I have a motion, please?
motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, thank you.
Calling BOA 718-727-170 Beacon Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Commissioner, good morning, board. My name is Michael Atwood from Haley &amp; Aldrich. We're the engineering firm representing 170 Beacon Street. We're here to request conditional use permit for the groundwater conservation overlay district recharge system. Site plan has been filed with Boston Water and Sewer. It's currently being reviewed. The no-impact letter has been submitted to the groundwater trust.
Thank you. Question?
Good morning, Madam Chairman.
Do you have any documents? We have nothing in front of us. Your office was called by staff to produce documents. Is there?
We do have the plan with us, and we have the no-impact letter with us. We have copies.
Copy, please.
Sure.
Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christian Simonelli Groundwater Trust, we do have the no-harm letter from the applicant, and the plans are before Water and Sewer. I checked with them, so we do request just a hold for signature for that letter.
Thank you.
So, but this plan doesn't have...
Doesn't have what, sir?
Doesn't have Water and Sewer stamp?
No, it's being reviewed by...
Currently before being, the plans are currently before Water and Sewer, under review. Hold for signature.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval holds for signature until...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that, proviso.
Calling BOA 713-469, 616 to 620 Mass Ave. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Clayton Turnbull, 32 Woodland Road in Jamaica Plain.
Christian?
Madam Chair, I'd spoken with the applicant last week. They were unaware that they needed to install a recharge system under the Article 32 code, so this time they will request a deferral.
Yeah, we requested a deferral. Went to Boston Water and Sewer yesterday. You know, the very foul, we're an existing business. This is the owner, Joe Bornstein, at 616.
We know the project, and we know the site.
Yeah.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
The date, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We're into September 12th.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Give you plenty of time.
Enjoy your morning.
Calling the first case, or ninth, I'm sorry. For 9:30 here is either any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30. Deferrals or withdrawals only. We'll call the case by case. Counselor, address?
148 Ninth Street.
Just for the record, calling BOA 676-659, 148 West Ninth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney of Anderson Maranci with the business address of 350 West Broadway.
Before we call it into the record, tell us what you're requesting.
We're requesting a deferral today. Our office was involved with a previous owner in this project and only found out that they still wish to, the new owner still wished to retain us last week. So we would like some time to go over the process from where we left off in our last representation until where it is today.
Do you have the file?
I'm sorry?
Do you have the file?
I have the file. You have the file, yeah. Would you like to say?
Okay. So may I have a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of September 12th.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Call the first case, calling BOA 712-843-243 Condor Street. This is a wrecked, a new four-story building with six residential units with parking at grade, and also to raise the existing structure. Violation's Article 53, Section 56, R Street parking. Article 53, Section 8, multi-family residential is forbidden in the 2F-200 sub-district. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, excessive number of stories. Article 53, excessive building height. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. And Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, 1216 Bennington Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Condor Creek Realty LLC. With me is Ben Goodman, who's the principal of the owner of the property. Madam Chair, this is a existing industrial commercial site located on Condor Street, which is just outside of Eagle Hill on East Boston. Our proposal is to demolish the existing garage, which has been used for various auto-repair type uses and garage uses, and propose a six-unit residential building with parking for six vehicles located at grade. This proposal would add the total of six two-bedroom units, all two-bedroom, two-bath, approximately 1,200 square feet each. We did have an opportunity to present this to the Eagle Hill Civic Association on two occasions. We did make some modifications to the roof, where we had a proposed headhouse with access up to a roof deck. Based upon some of the comments from the neighbors, we adjusted the proposal to address some of their concerns over the height. Overall, the neighborhood supported this proposal based upon the elimination of the industrial commercial use, which is not very compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding residential neighborhood. With respect to the relief that's necessary, this is in a 2F-2,000 district. The minimum lot size is 2,000 square feet. We're proposing a lot of 4,375 square feet.
I'm sorry, the lot is?
4,375 square feet. So would be a conforming lot. It's non-conforming with respect to the rear yard, the height, the floor area ratio, open space, and the parking, which is 1.5 per unit, and we're proposing one per unit. I would submit that the, this section of Eagle Hill located on Condor Street doesn't necessarily have a terrible parking problem, specifically because the waterfront is located on the opposite side of the street, and there are no residences or buildings on that side. So parking is not necessarily a difficult issue in that neighborhood. We did receive support by the Eagle Hill Civic Association. I do have a letter of support that I can provide the board and happy to answer any questions.
Tell us about that roof deck and the parking garage.
So the garage, the proposed garage at grade would be able to accommodate a total of six spaces. The roof deck that we originally proposed was going to be accessed by a mezzanine-level headhouse. That's been eliminated based upon community input and discussion.
And it's accessible to all units?
The roof deck originally was going to be accessible. We're not proposing the roof deck. We're eliminating it.
You're eliminating the roof deck?
I'm sorry. I stand corrected, hatch access only.
Hatch access, okay. And I'm assuming your, this is, this garage is here because of base flood elevation?
Correct.
Okay. And again, as in the previous cases, previous times you've been here, you need to figure out a better way to present that area to the street. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Glad to hear from the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this proposal. They presented to the Eagle Hill Civic Association, which they received a strong support. Also, we received letters from the direct abutters, who were supporting this proposal with the provisions that they, they actually agreed to remove the headhouse, also add fencing around the property, and still work with the direct abutters in regards to lighting on the back of the property.
Good morning, members of the board. Salvatore Lamatina, City Counselor, representing East Boston. Want to go record and support this long community process. This is a welcome use at that location. Thank you.
This is a sort of, it's a neighborhood combination, residential and commercial.
Number of auto repair auto bodies along that corridor, which are undergoing changes over the last six or seven months. I've seen a number of proposals coming through the neighborhood, so converting more to residential and getting rid of the industrial.
Mr. Bizani, does the drawing show a headhouse or a head?
No, it does not. It also shows no roof deck.
So I believe the, there was one iteration that we did show the neighborhood that had it, and the one that's been shown here is eliminating the headhouse.
Do you have updated plans with you, by any chance?
I don't.
In the meantime, does, does the requirement of the base, to meet base flood elevation require you to have your utilities, your mechanical room on a different level above flood elevation?
My limited understanding of where that needs to be located, not that it has to be on a different level, it just needs to be above the base flood elevation. I don't think it necessarily has to be on an entirely separate level, just located above the base.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm a little confused about the plan, because let's be admitted, what Bizani's being asked to prove right now what you're proposing?
I thought that what was submitted to ISD would have shown a roof deck. I think what we're showing here is the illustration that was shown to the neighborhood.
The drawings that we have here are the ones stated 10/2016. I think you're drawing the small ones. I need our subsequent date to that.
I can, I mean, I could submit that the proposed roof deck would be consistent with the design guidelines for rooftop restrictions for that neighborhood.
Wait a minute, is the roof deck back in now?
Roof deck is proposed. No headhouse to access the roof deck, only by hatch.
And the roof deck, therefore, is restricted to the two top floor units?
That's correct.
And the hatch comes through each of the units?
That's correct.
Is there a common stair that comes up?
Through the units.
Okay. Yeah.
I can provide an updated plan for that.
Why don't we, yeah, because the drawings I have, again, do not show that modification.
Correct.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant the release requested with two provisos, one, continued BPDA design review, and number two, we will hold signature until the updated plans that your testimony requires.
In that design review, an alternate for that garage door, please?
When we say alternate, we say setback or...
Rather than that complete sheer door, I think you did a nice job with the trellis or whatever that is on the front. There could be possibilities to do something that's more visually appealing.
Correct.
And this, I know these aren't efficient drawings, they don't show the roof deck.
They don't show it.
It's a roof plan, but nothing on it.
Correct.
So there was a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 710-277-6-SOLI Street. This is a construction of a single-family residence. The violation's Article 62, Section 7. One-family detached dwelling is forbidden. Article 62, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 62, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Michael Atwood, my office is at 170 Main Street. Joining me is Mike Sweeney, I'm from the, Nico Skeatos, who is the owner of 6-Soli Street, and Howard Grayling, who is the architect.
Okay, before we start, can I just ask, out of curiosity, how many people are here to speak on this project? So just to give everybody a heads up, I'd like to hear full information, but I will hear full testimony from three people on either side of the, of the issue, and that excludes elected officials. So please, in the meantime, while we're hearing the merits of the case, please think through who's going to speak on your behalf, and please make sure the speakers cover all the issues that are of interest to you. In the meantime, Counselor, please go ahead with your presentation.
Good morning. By way of brief background, our family acquired 6-Soli Street in 2014 and obtained all appropriate permits to demolish the existing house and create a new, as of right, fully dimensionally conforming row house in accordance with the property's row house zoning of RH 1500. As part of that permit issuance, the design of the house was thoroughly reviewed and approved by the B.R.A. subject to a public Article 80 process. The board heard our case in February of 2016.
I'm sorry, this was a public Article 80 process? What triggered that?
Neighborhood design review.
Oh, okay, design review.
Yeah. This board heard our case in February of 2016 as our direct abutters to the south, 59 Warren Street, challenged the issuance of our building permit. The board determined on an interpretation that we were, in fact, a row house. The matter was appealed by 59 Warren, and the board's decision was reversed by the Superior Court in November of 2016. No other abutters were involved in that appeal. We since revised our plans and are pleased to inform this board that the trustees of the 59 Warren Street Condominium Association have sent a letter to the board indicating that they do not object to the relief requested here today. The current revised plan seeks variances for use, rear yard setback, and usable open space. Our revised proposal ostensibly represents the same house. What changed is we're proposing to build it somewhat skinnier and deeper. It is proposed to be 2.5 feet from our common boundary line with 59 Warren, which is a dimension that we agreed to after consultation with Commissioner Christopher and the ISD. It is also proposed to be five feet deeper than originally proposed at the second and third floors and 10 feet deeper at the first floor. Aside from the conditions that give, that give rise to the need for variances, the proposed house will be dimensionally conforming in all other respects, including with regard to its height and floor area ratio. The rear wall and southern wall of the proposed home are generally positioned in line with the deepest parts of those same walls which stood previously as part of the demolished residence. Indeed, there's less constructed volume in certain areas relative to the home that stood originally. The southern wall of the proposed home closest to 59 Warren is consciously set back to provide reasonable access for maintenance of the 59 Warren wall from the outside.
Excuse me, so let's, let's just, because we, I think we all remember this case. So your violation is rear yard is insufficient.
Correct.
Tell us what, you're proposing 2.5 feet. What is required?
What is required is 15 feet. That is the statutory minimum setback from the rear lot line when constructing new. The challenge in this case is that originally the house was approved as of right, subject to that 15-foot setback from the rear lot line. What's changed is that we received the curveball in the form of the Superior Court motion, or Superior Court decision, which said that we were enjoined from touching the wall at 59 Warren Street. In an attempt to balance all of these different issues, we made the decision to setback and basically, in an attempt to maintain the usage of the house that we thought we would, you know, have in the first place, are seeking to go deeper as a result to preserve it.
And what is the size, what is the square footage of the building? The house?
The gross square footage, as calculated by the code, is 2,749. The lot size is 1,516. In a 2.0 district implies 3,032 square feet of gross square footage. We are current, the proposed house is 10% under the limit.
And what is the distance now from 59 Warren under this proposal?
2.5 feet at all points.
It's 2.5 at all points, okay. And let's see, the use is forbidden, but that's kind of settled for us, and the usable open space is insufficient. What is, what is required and what are you proposing?
I'm sorry, madam, with regard to the usable open space? The usable open space, as we understand it, is a little bit of a byproduct of the changing of the dimensions and the fact that because this is no longer, I guess technically, a row house, we're put into a semi-attached category, and I think we need to provide 450 square feet of usable open space, which is patently impossible given the constraints of the site.
And are you proposing a roof deck?
A roof deck is proposed and was approved originally as of right.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Well, the original house that we demolished, was that attached or...
It was, it, so it was existing non-conforming. It was properly attached on the 8-Soli Street side. We've got photos, actually, Howard, if you don't mind.
On the side where there's the 2.5-foot current proposed separation?
On the side where there's a 2.5 turn, which is what led to the, you know, some of the issue in the first place, it was attached by a gate and a, it was a gate and a small roof line. As I mentioned, the proposed house, basically, the old house was a type of an L, effectively, and so the new house seeks to basically close the L simplistically. So we are at the deepest points of the house previously. Sorry.
Maybe I'm not being clear. The proposals for 2.5 feet separation?
Yes.
From the exterior wall to the wall of the abutting building? What was it before?
It was approximately two, two and a half feet, sir. Yes.
And that gate is still going to be there?
There will be a gate going forward, Madam Ms.
Okay. And you're meeting modal front yard?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
I guess, you're meeting modal front yard?
It's a row house, so it's conforming in those regards otherwise. Again, the intent here was to build as much of a row house as we could, given the constraints from the Superior Court.
Thank you.
Could you clarify one point for me? What is a club room?
What is a, a club room, sir? A club room is basically just a family room for our kids and family to enjoy. It's built space.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Breen, Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. The applicant has completed a full community process, and after reviewing numerous letters written, both support and opposition to the variance requests, we are confident in supporting the relief from the row house district. The project will be owner-occupied, and we believe the applicant will work with the abutters in the Charleston community going forward. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. Salvatore Lamatina, representing Charleston. I also want to go record and support. There's a family that's trying to move, build a house for their family. We have seen all over the city, they're coming to, they're buying up one-family houses, they're tearing them down, and they're putting three or more condos. He's trying to build a house for his family. I've been down there, looking at the site, I just can't understand the opposition. So I want to go on record and support, like the mayor's office said, he's going to be owner-occupied, he's in living Charleston, he's investing... He's investing his family in Charlestown. So please, support this, Madam.
Thank you.
I'm Chairman of the Board. My name is Tomasz Kuna, 427 Buckle Hill Street. Currently the Chairman of Charlestown Neighborhood Council, have been for 10 years. We've been through a lot of these. I've been here a few times. And I, my concern here is that, that this has taken a long time. And talking about a family house, we've dealt with 50-unit condos quicker than this. And we have a hole in the ground in our community right now. It's not going to be built like it was. It's just not going to happen. The gentleman's trying to build a house for his family. It's important to us. He went through our process, demolition, all that. And the board, as you know, the board doesn't take zoning board votes. We only oppose. So we didn't oppose, and we thought it was going to happen. Now it's a court case, it was a court case. That's a long time. As a member of the Community Council since its inception, this is one of the longest single-family processes that we've ever dealt with. And quite frankly, it's a hole in the ground that something has to be built. And I think if a family wants to build a house to live in there, we support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Karen Foley, and I'm here on behalf of Boston City Councilor-at-Large, Anissa Rosabi George. Counselor George will not be taking a position of support or opposition on this case. She has heard from a number of constituents on this matter and has asked me to convey her thanks to Nick Skiatas and his family for their efforts to keep her office in the loop throughout this process. And to thank all of the residents of Solely Street and other neighbors who have reached out to her. This has been a long and messy process, made only more complicated by litigation and state involvement. This is a bad situation, but she hopes that no matter what happens today, the neighbors will be able to move forward toward a reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you. So please, three people representing the community in opposition. And any elected officials who are speaking in opposition, please come forward. Or representatives of elected officials.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin Brown from Counselor Tito Jackson's office. This project is not in our district, but the councilor would like to oppose the project.
Thank you. Any community members or anybody else to speak in opposition, please? Three people line up.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. My name is David Abbott, and I'm with Simons, Winslow, Willis, and Abbott. And on behalf of John and Elaine Sheehan, owners of Eight Solely Street, who are direct abutters of the property, I rise to oppose the application. First, it's my understanding that the board has received written opposition to the variances requested by the applicants on the board.
Sir, can you not read to us and just speak to us in bullet points?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. The board has received letters of opposition and signatures on petitions opposed to the variances from over 180 members of the Charlestown community. In addition to that, we have a letter from the Charlestown Preservation Society. We have letters and signatures from two dozen residents of Solely Street.
I'm sorry, can you speak to the merits of the case? Because we are looking at three violations here.
Sure.
And can you speak to those? We always rely on the mayor's office to talk to us about community process. And we understand it's been through an extensive process.
As the board knows well, Madam Chair, no variance can be issued where there aren't special circumstances or conditions affecting the lot that don't affect the neighborhood or the zoning district generally. The applicant points to no special circumstances or conditions pertaining to Six Solely Street. There's nothing unusual about the size of the lot. There's nothing unusual about the topography of the lot. There's nothing unusual about the configuration of the lot. That alone is fatal to the applicant's application. Further, there's absolutely nothing that the applicant can point to that would suggest that the literal imposition of the rear yard setback and usable open space requirements would deprive the applicant of all reasonable use of the property. The prior house, which had 1,985 square feet, existed for over 100 years. The applicant's own prior plans was at least 10% smaller than the plans that are before you today. So that alone is proof positive that these variances, specifically with respect to the rear yard setback and the usable open space, are not required in order to make sure that the applicant has the reasonable use of their property. Further, there's nothing, no variance can issue unless the board finds that it wouldn't be injurious to the neighborhood. We have, again, 180 signatures. We have letters from at least two dozen, and statements of opposition from at least two dozen residents of Solely Street, including, Your Honor, Madam Chair, three of the five direct abutters of the property.
Thank you.
Eight Solely Street, Seventeenth. Thank you.
Good morning, thank you. My name's Katie Stangle. I live at Seventeen Monument Avenue, which is the direct abutter to the property.
Are you on the rear?
Excuse me?
Are you a rear abutter?
A rear abutter.
Okay.
Yes. My property spans the entirety of Six Solely Street. I purchased the home in August of 2016 when the plans consisted of a 15-foot setback. You know, we reviewed the plans before purchasing the property. We were happy with the original plans. There was a 15-foot setback, which obviously is what we would like to see. Poured my life savings into the home we own, and, you know, sad to stand here today with the value of my property at risk over a very marginal setback for my home. It's incredibly invasive to me and my husband and my small children. And it just, it creates an incredible hardship for our family to have a home built to that close to ours. And I don't think there's any denying that it negatively affects the value of my property that I poured everything that I have into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name's Tom Ozell. I live at 48 Monument Square, which is at the top of Solely Street. And I would ask the board to consider a few things. Why did, myself included, about 189 people sign this petition opposing the property? It's a matter of absolute fairness. And the woman who spoke ahead of me is the fairness we're talking about. The Skiatas have the option right now, under law, to build the third biggest house on Solely Street. They can exercise that right, and God bless them. But why they feel the need to exceed that and inflict harm on the neighborhood to the extent that Fifty-Nine Warren Street had to spend $100,000 to defend their own property rights, which were held up in court? This is the unfairness we're talking about. And we just asked that we be heard. I mean, 189 people took the time to read and sign this petition. There's a reason for it. And we want fairness. And the other thing is, if this is approved, it sets a precedent, one, that anybody could come in and tear down a non-conforming house and then build it without any regard to the zoning laws.
Thank you. Three, go ahead. And please, talk to us in bullet points, don't read.
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Board. My name is Heather Knapp. I live at Ten Solely Street in Charlestown. So I abut the immediate abutters. I actually did file a letter, and I do have the originals of all of the petitions and letters. If you would like me to submit them to you, or you already have copies?
Why don't you?
You can submit them if you like.
You can submit them, please. We have them? Okay, excellent. Yes, so please continue your testimony. Hold on.
I just wanted to build on a few points that were actually made earlier by Mr. Skiatas. First, and some of the points that were actually made in support of his plan. First of all, he specifically mentioned, and it was specifically mentioned on several occasions, how long this is taken. That was actually his choice.
Can I just ask you? Because we are looking at the violations ahead of us, in front of us. This is what we are looking at to base our decision on. So please, talk to us about the violations.
Sure. So we live at Ten Solely Street, and the height of this building, including the roof deck, would invade our privacy of our back patio. Our home, along with the home that he tore down, was one of three homes that was moved in 1850 to this location. So it has already affected the value of our home. And it will be much larger, as was stated before, than any of the other homes. I think there's only one other home on the entire street that will be of this size. His setback will also affect Six, Eight Solely Street, which is the one he's attached to and was attached to before. By actually having the roof deck, it will be looking into their bathroom and looking into their patio as well, invading their privacy and overwhelming their home.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. For the rest of the residents who are here to speak, we will circulate a sheet of paper where you can put your name and address on the record and whether you're in support or in opposition. Based on the information that we have, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with continued design review.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 712-394, 300 to 399 Faneuil Hall Marketplace. This is a change of occupancy from a retail bookstore to Starbucks coffee shop and takeout restaurant, an interior renovation for tenant fit-up. The violation is Article 45, Section 14. Takeout restaurant is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Daniel Brennan, 50 Holt Road, Andover. Handle permits and licenses for Starbucks. I'm here to seek relief for a conditional use restaurant with takeout for a new Starbucks coffee. Recently, they closed the kiosk over in the Quincy Market location, anticipating this new store.
So is it, so tell us more. Tell us the size of the store.
Square footage is roughly 3,500 square feet. It's going to have three levels. On the first floor, ground level will be the coffee service line area. Second floor will be the coffee dining area. And in the basement, we'll have storage and warewash.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
And you're aware about the takeout requirements?
Yeah, the logo on cups and...
And, okay.
Yeah.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. The applicant has worked with our office during the community process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
What question? Is the contractor a member of the project?
Nope. No, we're in the pretty early stages. We haven't submitted full construction documents just yet.
And Mr. Bazani, did I ask you how the plans were?
You did, and the drawings are adequate.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
March of approval, continuing BPDA design review for exterior work and signage.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 712-280, 45 to 55 Lagrange Street. This is developing a new 21-story, 160, 380,000 square foot, 176 residential unit building with retail on the ground floor and below-grade parking. The violation is Article 32, Section 9, streetcar enforcement. Article 38, Section 19. Street wall height, 38-19.2 is excessive. Article 38, Section 7, the building height is excessive. Article 38, Section 7, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 38, Section 18, residential use as ground level is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Jay Igraman, attorney for the applicant. With me is John Madison of QMG Lagrange LLC, the owner developer. And to my left is BK Bolley of Stand Tech, the architects of record. Thank you for having us this morning. The site is rather small. If you include Lowell Court, which is a private way we share within a butter that fronts at 48 Boylston, it's under 9,000 square feet. The property is used as surface parking. It actually predates the parking freeze of 1973. And it goes back a lot farther than that, if you look at the sandboard maps. This is basically one of the last remnants of the old combat zone, hemmed in by buildings all around. There have been new developments to the south and east by Avalon Bay and the Kensington. The application actually has changed in the intervening couple of months. It's now 130 units. There will be 1,500 square feet of ground floor retail and no onsite...
I'm sorry, how much, how much retail?
1,500. 1,500. And there's no onsite parking. However, I do want to clarify that there's also no new shadows cast on Boston Common. This was very important, so no shadows. The zoning relief that's necessary for the project ranges from a conditional use permit for groundwater conservation. We have a no-harm letter submitted by Haley and Aldrich to the Groundwater Trust. I have copies if you want me to...
Yeah, we need that, we don't have one.
Okay.
So why don't we get that out of the way, Christian?
Sure.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Groundwater Trust. We do have the no-harm certification from the applicant, and the plans for the recharge system are before water and service. So again, we are requesting a hold for signature on that.
Thank you. The next form of zoning relief is an exception for street wall height. The default height limit would be 90 feet. The pattern actually, in the area, is higher than that. We'll be matching that pattern. We need to exceed the 90 feet.
And what is it?
I'm afraid I don't have that exact number at my fingertips, perhaps.
So which street wall? The facade doesn't change, goes all the way up?
The facade goes up 240 feet.
And this matches what's there?
Yes, there aren't any real changes of the new construction. Everything goes up. There are two variances needed due to the very small size and, as I say, hemmed in nature of the site, building height and floor area ratio. It's not an accident. I think that this lot is a holdover. It's an odd configuration, even though it's right in the smack dab in midtown. And then finally, although there is going to be retail on the ground floor, and the floor plate is quite small, we'll need ground-level residential uses approved by conditional use. With that, I turn it over to the architect, and we'll come back for questions.
A couple of questions.
Please.
One, what is required building height? And what are you proposing? Similarly, for FAR?
Normally, it's 170 feet if you undergo a large project review. I think technically, if we include the screen on the top, we're at 240, a screen on the top. The FAR will be exceeding 17. And again, if you go through large project review in midtown cultural district, I think you can do 10 is the normal.
And then the residential use?
Residential use is permitted by right at all levels, except at the ground level, you need a conditional use.
And tell us, how many units are you expecting at the ground level?
I don't think there are any actual units. If I could turn it over to BK to explain the floor plate...
Units start at the third level, at the ground level. We have retail uses, lobbies, service. On the second level, we have amenities. On the third level, we start with the residential uses.
And just to clarify, there is no proposed parking. Is that what I heard?
That's correct. Originally, we came in with some parking with an underground level, but in working through the Article eighty with the abutters and the B.R.A., that was eliminated.
Okay. So I suppose that would need a new refusal letter? Because then parking would be a violation?
No, actually, Madam Chair, in this midtown cultural district, you do not have to provide parking.
I see, okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Actually, I do have a question. The plans in front of us are clearly those which were initially submitted to I.S.D. for your refusal letter. Do you have a copy of the updated plans, which in fact, B.R.A. and... I need a loose, I need a loose plan.
So we have some typical plans? We can send you a full copy?
I need a loose one now, just now.
Full size, okay.
Yeah, lose that.
We don't right now.
Okay.
Well, let's just put a proviso then. We'll hold the decision until those are submitted.
And... Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Danny Chain, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. The applicant has gone before the neighborhood and has received community support. Thanks. Thanks.
Next, sir.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. The behalf of City Council, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Council, Bill Linehan's office. We too wish to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mayor Perez, representing the carpenters union. On behalf of the hundreds of members that live and work throughout the city of Boston, we'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. My name is Joe Fitzpatrick. I work for St. Francis House in Boston, and we are in support of this project. We are currently in negotiations with some design coordination due to the proximities of our buildings located at 48 Boylston Street within the St. Francis House buildings. But I am speaking of, we are in support of this project as we work through these negotiations. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Gary Walker, Electrical Workers Local 103. Like to speak in strong support also. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Couple of questions. Can you tell us the types of units you're proposing, the square footage, and how many affordable units?
Sure. Well, I'm going to introduce James Gray, who's the managing principal on the project. James?
Hi, I'm James Gray from Stan Tech. Can I come here and answer your question? The units will be a combination of one bedroom with den, two bedrooms, and one bedroom and one stack of studios here. The unit size is going to range from two bedrooms to be around 1,000 square feet. One bedroom dens around 750 to 800 square feet. The studios will go down to about 550 square feet, and the one bedrooms will be around 650 square feet.
I'm sorry, the one bedrooms are?
Around 650 square feet.
Okay.
Can I answer other questions?
And how many affordable units will be provided onsite?
All of them, 17.
17 affordables. And who will this be marketed to?
Perhaps John?
Yeah. It's a rental property, so it's kind of be marketed to middle price renters in the theater district.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant relief requested with continued BPDA design review and with a proviso that submit a... Can be a reduced set of what's actually been approved.
So, we need two things.
We need to hold it for the plans and hold the signature until we hear from water and sewer.
It's a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 671-723, 111 St. Petal Street. This is to install a pergola on the red deck. The violation is Article 16, Section 8, restricted roof structure district, Article 1, Section 6, rooftop additions within the protection area. Name and address for the record, please.
Peter McFarlane.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. My name is John Iaccoi. I represent the owner of the property, 111 St. Petal Street. The owner is Mr. Brad Yow, and we have an architect here, Michael Salaji. And I don't know who this gentleman is.
Please tell us briefly, are you part of the team, or are you in support or in opposition?
I'm opposing this, that's nonpermitted.
Okay, please have a seat there. We'll call you soon, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, we're seeking relief to install a pergola in the back rear yard garden area of the property. The pergola will be sitting on top of a existing carport that has already been there. Again, we've had neighborhood meetings. We've had support from most of the neighbors.
Why is it... So, this is a restricted roof structure district?
Well, it's not a roof. It's, we're sitting on a carport which is not visible from the street. It's in the rear of the yard area. I think I've provided you with some pictures, but in the plans, but it sits here.
So, please tell us, which is the building?
Our building is right here.
Okay.
And...
And so, you're proposing... And was the deck approved by us before?
The deck, well, there's no... It was an existing carport. It's been there.
Okay, so this is proposed for a deck and a pergola?
Yeah.
Sorry, correct. Yeah, the deck was already there. It's just the garden structure, the pergola itself, that was installed on top of an existing deck.
Okay, tell us how large that deck is and specifics about the pergola.
Sure. The deck is approximately 850 square feet. The pergola structure is an open structure that is approximately eight feet tall. It spans the width of the deck, which is 22 foot nine, and it's approximately 11 feet deep, starting from the back of the deck.
Thank you.
We've had architectural, St. Petal Street architectural review, and they had considered this structure exempt from their review process.
Why is that? Because it's in the rear yard?
It's not seen from the street.
Okay.
And didn't... There's no historic or architectural objections.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are okay. The issue really is because of the pergola, in fact, forms a roof structure. And so, the question really comes, is this a virtual room up there? When you take a look at it, there aren't any sides, but the mass of the roof with the spacing of the roof members, in fact, reads as a... It's something that has side, front sides, rear and...
Okay.
And that's what I think the real issue is.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Is the expectation that it will stay as drawn or it will be vegetation grown over the move lines and other things?
Well, I mean, obviously, I could modify based on what the board's decision is, is that we've got some plants that are growing eventually. I suspect they would grow over top.
Now, is this constructed, or is this... Are these renderings that we see?
No, it's built, Madam Chair.
When was it built?
Last summer. So, to give you some background, we worked with the homeowners on a complete renovation of their house that was finished last year. All required permits were pulled. At the end of the projects, the homeowners requested that they... That we upgrade their existing rear deck, and they hired the services of an outside vendor who told us that they could install this as of right without any permits. So, we were not involved in the process. They were fabricating and indeed installed the structure themselves before the violation then was handed out.
So, what happened? The contractor came by and said, no, that's not...
I don't know how the process happened, but a violation was sent to the homeowners.
We were told it was a garden structure and by the contractor, and we didn't require a building permit.
Okay. Thank you. Is... Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? So, did you have a clarifying comment to make in the front row? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jussa Goro, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held a butters meeting with the proponents, and none of the neighbors came out. I haven't received any letters of concerns, other than the fact that when we met with them, we also had representation from the civic association, and there was discussions about the color, because this is, St. Petal is a historically protected neighborhood, and the pergola kind of stands out in regards to the other properties in the area. So, we are in support with the proviso that they change the color to conform to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman and the board. My name is Scott Mustard. I'm the president of the St. Petal Neighborhood Association. I'm on the architecture committee. I appreciate Brad and the team here hosting the butters meeting. We met with them on the 2nd of February, and we believe that because of Article 6, Section 3, that the current pergola does adversely impact the neighborhood. We provided some recommendations as far as the St. Petal Neighborhood Association.
Can you please specifically tell us, and briefly tell us, what your concerns were?
The concerns that we shared with them in writing, and I'll provide this record over here, is that the white, very large lattice work and the pergola, very large columns, is out of touch with the neighborhood. I think it's very appropriate for Andover and would be a nice garden oasis, but we don't feel that it's compatible with the 2x8 blocks that make up the historic St. Petal Neighborhood District.
So, you're talking about the size and the design?
The...
What is it?
Size and the design, and most importantly, the color. We would suggest that Joe Cornish and Landmarks approve a color that, as a compromise for something they built.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Thank you, Madam Chairman and the board. My name is Peter McFarlane. I've owned that building at 115 St. Petal Street for 50 years. My grandparents owned 40 buildings in 1905. My father was McFarlane Oil Company since 1935. I've had the keys to 8,000 buildings from the Back Bay to the South End. There is nothing in any alley that looks like that. I'm not opposed to any additions, any roof decks. I've never opposed anything in the 50 years I've lived there, but this I oppose because it's... Even the garbage men said it was an abomination. I don't suggest that they take it down because I'm a friendly neighbor, but it should be painted black as the St. Petal Street Commission, because it looks like a plastic... It's just unbelievable coming down, as I showed you those pictures. If they could only paint it black or tone it down, it would be just fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for denial. And for denial for a couple reasons. Primary reason is that I don't know how it got through, but this never should have been built without appropriate review in the beginning. And I simply do not believe that a coat of paint is going to solve any problem.
And is... Are you interested, Mr. Bazani, in the height of it, in the solid feel of the members of the structure?
Yes. I think the fellow that spoke, the first fellow that spoke, I think, offered some comments. I think the issue here is that everybody wants to be a good neighbor. And I simply do not think in this case trying to be a good neighbor is the way to solve this problem.
This says a way...
I would make a recommendation of being removed, but I think that may go way too far.
Madam Chair.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
A motion does not carry. May I have a second motion?
I would make a motion to approve the structure and the request, but with a proviso that the design and in particular the color be modified in a way of addressing the...
Are you suggesting BRA design review to look at that?
That's already built.
But they can work on the color with landmarks or... Okay?
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries with that proviso.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 656-473, 1 Grace Court. This is building two new... Two-story decks. The article violation is Article 17, Section 1, usable open space is insufficient. Article 19, Section 1, side yard setback is insufficient. And Article 20, Section 1, rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is an exceedingly simple application. 1 Grace Court is a legal four-family dwelling. Right now, secondary means of egress from the two second-floor units is via a outdated code noncompliant fire escape. The proposal here is to add a rear two-story deck structure, which will provide open space and will also provide compliant means of egress for the units, the top units in particular. The deck would span the rear width of the building. It would be approximately seven feet in depth and would have a staircase on either end of the deck providing discharge into the rear yard. In terms of the violations, this application was filed in October of 2016. It is hence cited under the base code, and in our Point 8 district, there are three cited violations, insufficient usable open space. The fact is that the structure of the stairs do displace some of the former usable open space, hence the violation. However, that is more than compensated for in terms of the open space provided on two levels by the new deck.
Mr. Morancy, is this two-story?
Yes.
And this is what levels?
I'm sorry.
At what levels? Is it a... Okay, this is a two-story building?
Yes, it's a two-story... Yes, it's a two-story building.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
They're rudimentary.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We did hold an onsite butters meeting, and there were no objections raised. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, Councilor Bill Linehan's office. We too wish to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition to this project? May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for approval with continued... Do we need BPDA? BPDA? No, Jeff? Okay, so, I want a motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
It's now 10:35. We're just going to call 10:30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30?
13 Shetland Street.
I'm sorry, say it again, please?
13 Shetland.
For the record, calling BOA 682-855, 13 Shetland Street. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is George Morancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is an Article 80 small project. It has not yet gone before the BRA. It needs to be deferred. My anticipation, or hopeful anticipation, is this might be ready for BRA action in October, perhaps September. Therefore, I would aim for something at the end of September, maybe the last meeting of that month if possible.
And just for the record, Mr. Galvin has recused himself.
Actually, Mr. Fortune, if there's something available in early October, I just want to make sure that we're through the BRA.
May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
We can do our... I'm sorry.
Any opposed? The date, please?
October 17th.
Thank you.
Address, counsel?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Address, please.
279 Lamentine Street.
For the record, calling BOA 690-834, 279 Lamentine Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty and Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802, here in Boston. Madam Chair, we've had several butter meetings with the Mayor's Office. We met with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee last week on July 5th. They've asked us to defer. We need some more time to work through the project with the butters.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We can do September 12th.
Thank you. I also have an 11:30. Would you like me to come back at 11:30?
Yeah, we'll see you at 11:30.
Okay, thank you.
Address, ma'am?
6 Long Terrace, West Roxbury.
Are you deferring?
Yes, we'd like to meet with the council again in the...
Let me call it for the record, please. Calling B.O.A. 585-382-SIXLONGTERRIS. Name and address for the record, please.
Fiona Duncan, 5 Shawley and Dedham.
Tell us what, why you're requesting a deferral?
We would like to meet again with the local council in September in the ravine.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
A motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
September 26th.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Bearing that, we'll go back to the 9:30 cases. Calling the next case, calling B.O.A. 702-337-47 to 53 Fonzworth Street. For 47, 53 Fonzworth Street, there's a change occupancy to a resident restaurant, including a microbrewery, building out the following, with a new two-story tenant space at 47 Fonzworth Street and an existing space to be renovated by the tenant and change the occupancy to an A2 restaurant use. The violation is Article 8, Section 7. Microbrewery facility, item number 69, containing alcohol content of 0.5% is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dennis Quilty, Attorney at McDermott, Quilty and Miller, representing the applicant, Trillium Brewery. With me, Nick Bonides from Trillium. This is the redevelopment of the older commercial building at 47, 53 Fonzworth Street, just up against, if you will, Seaport Boulevard on the Fort Point side. The proposal is to create a new retail home and flagship for Trillium, which is, I think by many accounts, the premier craft brewery in the city of Boston, known for its products literally around the country and-
Counselor, the only violation is that the, the reuse as a microbrewery is forbidden?
Interesting, isn't it?
Yes, because it's not listed in the tables, okay?
So they have right, just so the board knows, just across on Congress Street is their original position, if you will. It's a very small facility. They actually brew most of their product outside of the city in a large facility in Canton. This will provide them with a place for the public to enjoy the product, have dining experience, have some brewing, brewing experiences, a roof deck proposed for dining and an outdoor patio. We did have a very positive meeting with the Fort Point Neighborhood Association and Mr. Allison was present. We were not required to hold an abutters meeting. I did make outreach to the Southie electeds a number of times. They had a very, very busy schedule and were simply unable to accommodate us, but I was suggested that I could come forward today, having at least made the attempt to go, say that they knew what it was, so.
And the rest of the uses are allowed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drives are terrific.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to own record in support. As the proponents noted, they have met with the Fort Point Neighborhood Association and received support, and this is a use that already exists in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Council, Bill Linehan's office. We too wish to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty. Council to go on record in support.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, once again, Gary Walker, Electrical Works, Local 103, like to speak in support also. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, but first I have a question. Are you going to retain the operation of the corner of-
Congress.
-Punch?
Yes.
In that case, I make- That's right. I make a motion to grant a relief request with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling B.O.A. 673-434-88FSTREET. This is a complete remodel of an existing two-family, in addition to above and to the side, and change occupancy to three units. The violation is Article 14, Section 14-2. Lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 15, Section 1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 17, Section 1, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 18, Section 1, the front yard requirement is insufficient. Article 19, Section 1, the side yard requirement is insufficient. Article 20, Section 1, the rear yard requirement is insufficient. And Article 23, Section 1, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by James Christopher of RCA Architects of 415 Ponset Avenue in Dorchester, the project architects. Madam Chair, members, this is an application to erect a side addition to an existing two-family structure at 88 F Street, the corner of 88 F, I'm sorry, the corner of F Street and West First Street in South Boston. I point out for the record that the application was submitted on November 10th, 2016. The result is that the refusal letter cites the, the premises, base code zoning at the time, H150. A revised set of plans submitted today from what was originally submitted to the Inspection Services Department depicts the building and the addition without a roof deck. There were two roof decks on the original application. During the community process, there were some objections raised to potential roof, roof decks, and these roof decks have been removed from the plans that are before the board.
Mr. Moranci, all the other violations still stand?
All the other violations still stand. One of them is incorrect, but yes, nothing has been, nothing has changed with respect to the violations cited.
So tell us what, tell us about the rear yard, the rear yards.
The rear yard set, the rear yard setback violation, the new addition is, is, is being erected to the left of the building on what is a separately assessed parcel. The new addition actually is compliant in terms of rear yard setback. The existing building has an existing nonconformity with respect to rear yard setback that isn't being changed.
Well, I'm trying to, so it's a separately assessed parcel. Are you combining lots then?
It's, yes, the lots are combined. The, the address, the, the separate parcel is within the, is an 86 F Street address, actually.
I see, okay.
Yeah, if, the first page of what was submitted to the board is the certified plot plan. So again, you can see that the addition on the left is compliant with respect to rear yard setback. The, the existing building is being extended vertically, but not to the rear. The footprint is not changing. With respect to the other violations, again, there's a lot size violation. This was cited in H150, which requires 5,000 square feet minimum lot size. This combined lot is 2,206 square feet. There's an FAR violation, the resulting FAR here is 2.26. There's a usable open space violation. The decks were removed, but there is still approximately 903 square feet of open space as compared to the 1,200 required under H150. There's a citation for front yard setback, but this is in fact a, a building with a modal alignment as well as the addition. There's an incorrect citation for a rear yard setback insufficiency due to the application of Article 19, Section 2. There is in fact no side yard required for the first 70 feet of lot depth in an H150. There's a rear yard insufficiency, as we talked about at the very beginning. The addition is in fact compliant with rear yard setback. The existing buildings in, the existing buildings inadequate setback is not being increased. And finally, we are cited for an off-street parking insufficiency because two tandem spaces are being proposed. So two tandem spaces in the garage total of four cars. Because they are in fact tandem, they do not meet the requirement of, of one space per unit. We're only adding one unit, but again, the, the spaces in the garage really only count as two, two-car parking spaces because of the tandem configuration.
How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drives are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to own record in support. We did hold an onsite abutters meeting and the developer did address concerns by removing the roof decks. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Council, Bill Linehan's office. We too wish to go on record in support. The plans were revised to reflect what the neighborhood wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record.
Susan Jacobson, 249 West Fifth Street. And I'm a direct abutter, both behind their house, because they're on a corner and I'm on a different street, and the back of my house abuts their property. I am completely unaware of any abutters meeting that has been held. The first time I heard about any plans they had was when I got a postcard from your office. I have letters from two other abutters with me today who weren't able to be here. One is out of town and one is a single mother. And the third abutter just had a new baby. They were unaware of this. So I don't know how notice went out or where this meeting was held, but I'm completely unaware of it. And I do look at all the notices I get because our neighborhood's very busy with construction. So I have specific things that I'm also opposing.
So please bullet point to us what your concerns are.
Yes, I am nervous, I'll let you know. I've never done this before. For one thing that they haven't mentioned is there are two lots, 86 and 88. He just mentioned that. 86 F Street was purchased from the city of Boston as part of the yard sale program. And so there are some deed restrictions that I'm not, it is not apparent to me whether they've been taken into account in this process. Although, so when you buy from the city of Boston a yard sale, my understanding is going to be used for parking or gardening and things like that. And it's been used as parking. It has a curb cut and they paved, and that's how it's been used. And there's some little bit of gardening or it's weeds now, but... I know that there, there is a provision in the yard sale program that you can add to an existing dwelling unit, but this seems like much more than a, just an addition to an existing dwelling unit. They are trying to add, not just make the two-family much bigger, but add a three-bedroom con, uh, unit, both to the side and raising even higher than this property already goes. So I'd like to see this being examined in light of the fact that this 1,115 square foot strip at 86 is actually, was purchased from the city of Boston as part of yard sale, and I don't think making a profit on building yet a third home is what was intended by that program. As far as my specific home and how this relates to it, if you look, I think you have a map that shows the property lines. The rear of this house is, faces the side of my house. Right now, on the first, the most of 88 F Street goes back from the street to the back to about 39 feet. Their property line's 44 feet. There is on the first floor, a non-conforming, sort of a shed or maybe a sun porch at one time, that sticks out and goes right into property line.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand, so, so is that concern besides the yard, the yard sale parcel, is your concern that it's too close to your building? What is that concern?
Well, I mean, it is, but that wasn't anything that I could do. I mean, if you look at it-
So what is your concern then?
My building is about 23 and a half feet back, and then I own about a foot and a half into the land there.
So what exactly is your concern on that?
They're building something that's far too large for the space.
Okay.
It's, it's the, I don't know all the terminology, the floor area ratios and the, they're way over the max.
Okay.
They're adding a whole nother uni, a three-bedroom unit in an area that's very congested already. The parking plan is completely insufficient for this many units. There already are some spots there, they're not adding any, and they're tandem, so you can't pull in and out, you wouldn't be, there's no way to make spots that you can go in and around, you know, have, I don't know how many spots there legally needs to be. I know there were increases recently, something about 1.5 per unit. They're woefully inadequate on that. But they also want to build a wa, and they want to extend the wall at the back. They, there's a non-conforming shed that sticks out from the first floor about four feet and really is right like a few inches from the property line. But then on the second floor, it isn't like that. It's only like 39 feet back. The first floor is about 44 feet back. The second floor is about 39 feet from front to back, leaving four feet between my property line and it. The way I read their plans, they're trying to build a wall, they're trying to grandfather in that there's one little part that's non-conforming on the first floor and make the whole thing non-conforming, I, right at the property line, when I look at the measurements that I have seen in the plans.
So your, your concern is that the shed, oh, which is a shed, is being incorporated into the building to-
Yeah, it's not only a shed, it's like, it, the, I, I'd have, I could refer you to one of their elevation maps. But the, the house is, you know, straight. And then there's a part that comes off of it that's probably, like, maybe at some one time a sunroom.
Okay, thank you.
But it's fallen into disrepair.
Any other questions? Any other concerns?
If you don't mind me reviewing my notes. They are adding a full third story.
Yeah.
Where there really isn't one now, there's, again, like a, maybe a quarter of the roof has a storage room on the top. So when they want to make it four feet closer to my property line, I'm right on my property line, and I have windows on that side that, I have a third floor, I have a single family. It's going to block the light to our bedrooms on the third floor, block our view of Dorchester Heights Monument. It's just overwhelming to the size of my house and the size of the lot they have. They're building to every property line they can. And it's just, I mean, you've noticed, you saw in the plans there's insufficient. May I submit the letters from the abutters?
And I noticed in the meantime, there's somebody else speaking in opposition? Are you going to speak in opposition? Okay, so please submit your letter into the record because I think you've covered quite a bit. In the meantime, Mr. Moranci, can you please respond to the yard sale parcel?
Yes.
And the incorporation, the proposed incorporation or clarify if it's incorporating, incorporating a shed or whatever it is into the design to claim that rear yard?
Yes, DND restrictions under the relevant program prohibit the use of the landing question for anything besides a storage, a tool shed, a garden shed structure is usually what's referred to, off-street parking, and in fact, an addition to the building. DND would need to issue a certificate of compliance because of the restriction. They're routinely granted. This is an addition to an existing building which conforms to the program requirements in question. With respect to the issue of the rear projection sheet EX4, which the board has-
Has the N.D. issued such a-
No, they typically don't look at it until if and when it's approved by the board, when it's a variant situation, Mr. Ehrlich. EX4 shows the portion, the side elevation shows the portion of the building in the rear that extends back. That would in fact be squared off, it would go up. The maximum height of the building is zoning compliant, it would be 32 and a half feet. It's not a lot less, but it's actually about a foot less than the existing maximum of height point of the roof, which is that partial third story. In terms of the, the units, they are in fact two-bedroom units. Reference was made to a three-bedroom unit. They're in fact three two-bedroom units. And again, in terms of size and density of the building, the FAR is 2.26, height 32 and a half feet. I, I don't know what to say on that.
Well, given that information, any questions? If not, may I have a motion, please?
I want to make a motion to approve with our continued BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Thank you.
Calling B.O.A. 685-446-39WASHBURNSTREET. This is erecting a new three-family residential dwelling on a vacant lot, construct balconies and roof deck through a headhouse. Violation is Article 60, Section 40, off-street parking. Article 60, Section 41.1, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 60, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Patrick Mahoney of Adamson Moranci. With the business address of 350 West Broadway. I'm here with my client Doug George. With an address of 39 Main Street, 32 A. Madam Chair, I just handed out, and the request of the clerk handed out revised set of drawings. What we're proposing here is the erection of a three-family home on three levels. Each unit will consist of a two-bedroom. The upper two floors, unit 2 and 3, has two baths, while the lower floor is a bi-level unit with three baths. The bi-level is some, is a product of the neighborhood, uh, community process in the Neighborhood Association, where they asked if we'd consider condos only. And, and my client Doug George agreed to do so, provided that we could make the first floor a bi-level unit. And everyone agreed.
Okay, we're not interested in ownership, but we would like to, our interest is in the violations here. Can you speak about the conformity with existing building alignment and off-street parking regulations?
Certainly. The conformity with existing building line isn't a violation. Rather, it's, it's a section in the zoning code that changes the front yard requirement. There is no front yard violation as it meets the modal alignment, which is the predominant existing front yard of the block between two public ways. So that's in compliance. We have a side yard violation where it's five feet away from the lot line.
Can you speak to the parking, please?
Yes, the three parking spaces are required, and we're not providing parking with this proposal.
You're not?
No.
Okay, and tell us about the roof decks. It looks like there's access by a headhouse.
There is, it's a walk-up access through the top floor unit to a open roof deck.
And is it, so it's only accessible to that third unit?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drives are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Is there a reason that you chose to incorporate a headhouse as access to the roof deck?
Yes, in this case-
Knowing the position that the board said.
Yes, there, there was. And part of it is to provide some screening from the other roof deck on the condo to the right. Because there's a roof deck on the building to the right of this building. They wanted to have some type of privacy screening. We thought walk-up access would be an appropriate way to achieve that.
And there's no other option? Like a pergola, something like that?
I suppose there would be. We could do it, we could try for a wall.
Okay. Um, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go-
we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Vice City Council Large Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
Hi, my name's Dennis Flaherty, I'm a resident of one seventy-five Boston Street, close by, and I'm in support of the project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support.
Good morning, members of the board, my name is Phil Tribuco, I abut the property within ten feet and I support the project.
My name's Adam Sarbaugh, owner of thirty-two Rossin directly abutting the rear of the property, and we're in support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant or leave requested with the following proviso, BPDA take a very aggressive look at the headhouse access, including an option of doing away with it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set with that proviso.
Calling BOA six-eight-three-two-five-zero, seventeen Rose Clair Street. This is a repair in existing roof, the violation is Article nine, Section one, extension of a non-conforming use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Clayton Cheveroli, seventeen Rose Clair Street, unit three.
So tell us what the size of the deck that you're proposing to repair, what the size is and what the size of the proposed deck is.
Thank you for having me, I might be woefully unprepared, I don't, I'm not sure I know, I don't, I didn't bring the plans, so I don't know the size. I know that you may have the plans in front of you.
So how much more are you extending it by?
My guess is that right now it is probably eight by eight, and I think it would become eight by fifteen.
Eight by fifteen?
I'm not sure, it might be longer than that.
And what's the access to this roof deck?
It's from our unit, it's, there's stairs that go up to the roof directly from our unit.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Plans are adequate, but they raise a question.
Sure.
Wasn't this project approved by us in two thousand and four, and isn't the roof actually already built?
Yes.
So how did it get built?
How did it get built? I don't know, my wife and I bought, purchased the property...
What's the roof deck?
A few years ago. The roof deck is there.
Did you expand the roof deck or the original roof?
The original roof deck is still there. The reason we wanted to repair it is because it's made of wood, and it's been, it's, the railings are kind of falling off, we have a three-year-old son, and we don't go up there anymore because of that. The, our neighbor's roof deck is larger than ours, so our idea was to repair with composite our roof deck so that it would never fall prey to being damaged again, but when we thought of just redoing the square size instead of, we thought it would probably look better for us and for everyone to make it match our neighbor's roof deck.
So what's there is an eight by eight, you haven't built the eight by fifteen yet?
Correct, no.
Was that your question, Mr. Bazani?
No, the question was that when we approved this in two thousand and four, the drawings before us specifically showed the roof deck. Now, I understand it's not this fellow's issue, but somehow what was there or what is there is illegally built, and therefore what we're asked to do is to expand on something that may never have been loved, been loved again.
I actually, I was able to find, I had trouble finding the original plans, I was able to find the original ones. I know that Doug George built our building, and I was able, him and Anissa, his wife, helped him find them, and it did show that the variance, I think it's called variance, was met, and it showed the original roof deck.
Hold on, hold on one sec. Mr. Bazani, are you saying that it was proved without a roof deck?
Well, what I'm saying is the drawings that I have in front of me, that came before us years ago, do not show the roof deck, so I don't know how that got built, and the drawings that you're describing are not what we have in front of us.
I thought that we had supplied the drawings that I found.
Any other questions from the board?
Actually, if it matters, I printed them out, I have them.
Hold on one second. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in strong support. We did hold in a Butters meeting, and the project was very well received. This is consistent with the many decks in the area, and it is just repairing a deck that is already existing. Thank you.
John, is that access through a hatch or through...
I'm not sure, I believe a hatch.
Adam Sarbaugh, thirty-two Rossin, we hear a support for the project as well.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeckren, City Council Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? What's the access to the roof deck, is that a hatch or...
It is from our, from our second floor, there's a door, you open it up, and then you walk upstairs, and then you go to the roof. There's no headhouse.
Okay. Given this information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna, go ahead, Ethan.
No, I in fact will make a motion to grant or leave requested. The issue for me is simply how it appeared at the beginning, but since there seems to be reasonable support, I'm motion to grant or leave requested BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set with that proviso, and please have the plans printed for him as soon as possible. And we will call this decision until we have those plans.
Calling BOA seven-zero-seven-one-two-two, three twenty-four K Street. This is a change, existing two-family home to a three-family home by building an addition on the same lot. A twelve-foot driveway already exists in the right of an existing two-family home. Violation is Article nineteen, Section two. Side yard and driveway, side yard is insufficient for driveway, ten-foot minimum is required.
Can you name and address for the record, please?
Name and address for the record, I'm sorry.
Good morning, good morning, Josephine, three twenty-four K Street.
Will anybody else at the table be speaking?
Yes.
Scott Hayet, Scott Hayet Architects, I'm the architect for this project.
Okay, so the only violation is the side yard with driveway. If ten feet is required, what is, what is existing? Or is it ten feet and it's required to be twelve feet?
Ten feet is the requirement, the existing is just under eight feet, it's an existing condition, there's an existing curb cut from a long time back. The current driveway is used for access to the backyard and to pull off in the event of a storm. We're proposing an addition, three-bedroom addition for the third generation of bikinis, and the requirement is that there be two spaces. In order to access those two spaces, we need a driveway, the configuration of the existing building, the lot width is thirty feet, and the existing house is roughly twenty-two, and so there's just under eight.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in strong support. We did hold an onsite Butters meeting, and the project was very well received. This is a good project to keep the family in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Council Bill Linehan's office, we too wish to go on record in strong support. There was no opposition at the Butters meeting, and this is a longtime Southie family that's trying to build, build an addition for their son, so would like to see it go through. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Vice City Council Large Michael Flaherty, echo the sentiments of District Council's office, council like to go on record in strong support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set with that proviso.
Calling lost case for nine-thirty, calling BOA seven-zero-one-five-six-zero, six St. Margaret Street. There's also building code, BOA seven-zero-one-five-six-one, six St. Margaret Street. This is a change, auction from a one-family to a two-family house, no work is to be done, the violation is Article sixty-five, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient, Article sixty-five, Section nine, rear yard is insufficient. This is for a building code. This is the eighth addition, CMR three-one-one point one, means of egress, the proposed spiral stairway does not meet the minimum dimensions given. Name and address for the record, please.
Six St. Margaret.
Name and address for the record, please.
Artim, Artimaret, six St. Margaret.
Hey, Mr. Bazani, can you please talk, see what's requested on the building code?
The issue is that the four-foot diameter circular stair is not large enough to meet the code, and this is proposed, it's not built yet, is it?
I mean, we can build different stairs.
You can make it bigger, right?
Yes. Can I have a motion, then?
So therefore, we make a motion to deny the building code release because they will comply.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now going to the fact of the case, can, how do the plans look, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are ready.
Because there's, violations are minimal?
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in strong support. We did hold in a Butters meeting, there were no objections, and this will be consistent with what's going on in the neighborhood.
This wasn't before this board before, was it, this property?
Not as far as I know.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeckren, City Council Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Vice City Council Large Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BPDA design...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso, so you're all set. Thank you. Good luck.
Before we do the ten-thirties, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for ten-thirty? I know we've already called them, but people might have been outside.
We will take, we'll reconvene at eleven-twenty. Okay. So, um, we can deal with that. How about the parking? Okay. So, you're all set? Thank you. Good luck.
Before we do the ten-thirties, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for ten-thirty? I know we've already called them, but people might have been outside.
We will take, um, we'll, we'll reconvene at eleven-twenty. Okay. So, you're all set? Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling B O A six-nine-three-eight-four-nine-four-forty-one Shamet Avenue. This is to install a new roof deck. Violation is Article sixty-four, Section nine. A townhouse rohouse extensions into rear yard above the first story. Article sixty-four, Section thirty-four, restricted roof structure regulations. Name and address for the record, please.
Carrie Dowling, four-forty-one Shamet Avenue, number two.
Bruce Miller, Architect, forty-six Waltham Street, Boston.
So tell us briefly what's being proposed.
Uh, the existing properties between, it's on Shamet, but packs up to Newland Street. There's an existing L on the back of the building, probably from the eighteen hundreds. Um, the, the, the client has the third-floor condo or floor above parlor level. Wants to put a roof deck on the roof of the L.
And what's the access to this, um?
So there would be a landing outside for bedroom window, and then a ladder or a stair that goes up to the roof deck.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Sam Chambers, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We held, um, in a butters meeting where only one individual, um, was in attendance. It so happens to be the Neighborhood Association President, um, who was also in favor of this proposal. So we would like to go on record in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Push for approval, B P D A design.
Eleven-thirty.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling B O A seven-one-six-five-six-five, forty-two Glenway Street. This is direct a two-family dwelling. Violation is Article ten, Section one, limitation of area of accessory uses. Article sixty, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Article sixty, Section forty, point four, off-street parking location. Article sixty, Section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, Section forty-one, sixty dash forty-one point two, traffic visibility across the corner is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Ashen Island, one forty-two Erie Street.
Could you guys speak up a little bit, move forward to the speak? Thank you.
Ashen Island, one forty-three Erie Street.
Tell us what you're proposing.
Possible two-and-a-half-story attached townhouse at the corner of Glenway and Erie Street.
Okay. And how many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Um, Edward, is this modular construction?
Well, it was, it was originally.
No, no. What you're proposing, are you proposing trailers? Modular construction?
To build T-Rack frame, frame.
Stick frame, okay? And tell us where you're proposing to put the parking?
One is that, the, um, Glenway Street, and the other is that, the corner of Erie and Glenway Street.
How, how does the plan look as far as the parking is concerned, Mr. Bazani? Does any of it look like it's front yard parking? Or maybe it's just the visibility? Bob, have you seen the plans?
No, I haven't.
Okay. In the meantime, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Flavia De Vega, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Like to go on record in support of this application. Met with the butters and the community group. They're in full support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Cheatham, Councilor Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record in support. Thanks.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate. Uh, I just, uh, it has, it has the look and feel of a modular unit.
Okay.
Uh, because it's labeled modules.
Okay, so, um, we can deal with that. How about the parking?
Uh, the parking is actually a corner lot. So there's parking on the left side, and there is parking, uh, on Elm Street, which since it's not the front yard, it's not front yard parking, it's actually side yard parking.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with B P D A design review and a strong recommendation that this be stick.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos. Okay? So you're all set?
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling B O A six-eight-three-four-five-zero-fifteen Wilson Street. Is Wilson Street here? Okay. This is to change option from a three-family to a four-family and renovate and install a sprinkler system. Legalize the existing condition. The violation is Article sixty, Section forty. Parking is insufficient for additional unit. And Article sixty, Section eight, a multi-family is forbidden in a three-F six-thousand sub-district.
Two-F three-thousand.
Madam Pan.
Name and address for the record, please.
Cecil, Cecil Hansel, one forty-six Cedar Street, Boston, Mass.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hansel, has Wilson Street come before us bef- before?
I believe it has.
It has? Were you representing at that time? So what's changed?
Uh, we've added the parking.
You've added the parking?
Right. And the, uh, the fourth floor, uh, the third floor was not shown. So we provide plans to show the fourth floor, uh, tenth floor rather, and, uh, and the parking.
So you're, you're proposing to convert this from a three-family to a four-family?
Four.
Okay? And so the viol- there are two violations. The use is forbidden, and the parking is insufficient. So tell us about the parking. How are you accommodating the parking?
Well, there, there's a lot next door to fifteen, and we're going to use that as a, a parking for floor.
Yeah, well, you know that all the parking has to be accommodated on the lot, because what happens if the lot next door is built? You know?
Well, we, uh, the person owns fifteen and the lot next door.
What if he sells it, then?
Oh, he's not, he's not going to sell it. He's, it's acquired for parking, so that's what's going to be used for.
Okay, and tell us about the, um, the size of the units? Each, each unit, what's the size? Mr. Bazani, do you have that on the plan?
I, I have the plans of the units, uh, and I have a site plan. The site plan does not show any parking. But the lot is adequate, lot size is adequate, so it could accommodate parking, but something doesn't change.
So how, how are the, um, what are the sizes of the units? And if any, are any of them in the attic or the basement? In the meantime, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Ruth Georges, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
To, Madam Chair, to answer your question, uh, there is a basement unit, and there is a first, second, third, fourth. The basement, are you actually extending into the basement?
No.
Okay. So that space is just going to be utilized for all the units with storage and not any others.
Okay. So I'm trying to get it. So where, where is, where will the, the fourth unit be?
The fourth unit?
The fourth unit.
On the third floor.
On the third floor? And how large is that? Mr. Bazani, any help?
No, well, the, the problem is these drawings are not to scale, so I can't scale it. And they're not dimensioned, so I can't imagine.
Walter, did you want to speak?
Um, Walter Appwhite, Councilor McCarthy's office. Uh, at this time, um, I'm not sure if they had a community meeting, so we can't go on record as supporting it at this time.
We had a community, a community meeting. I don't know whether you have the, the results of that, but they're, uh, they approved it.
Who, who sponsored the community meeting?
Mayor's office.
John, do you know anything about that?
May I make a suggestion? Why don't we simply defer this until we have either confirmation that a community meeting took place? And also at the same time, it would allow, uh, Mr. Hansel to provide us with dimension drawings to answer the question as to what are the unit sizes?
Okay. Let's have a short deferral. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We can get you in the August fifteenth meeting. We can get you in the August fifteenth meeting.
Okay. August fifteenth at eleven-thirty, okay?
Calling the next case, calling B O A seven-one-nine-five-one-seven-two-sixty-five Hancock Street. This is to demo existing structure and building new construction of three-family wood-framed building. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, parking is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, maximum stories is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Abraham Alvarez, uh, I live in eighty-nine Alton Avenue. I'm the contractor. Thank you.
Okay, so who owns the house? You own the house? Okay. So please tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, originally, well, well, we proposed in, uh, three-unit, built a three-unit, but we went to, uh, the community meeting, and they denied the three-unit.
They what?
They, they denied three-unit, but they willing to, uh, support the two-unit.
Uh, what, what are you coming before us?
We, we're going along with them, proposing a two-unit instead of three.
Okay, so do you have new plans for two units?
Not yet, because they just let us know last week.
Motion for the referral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We're into September.
September?
September twelfth.
Okay.
We have to have a set of plans that corresponds with the call.
Okay, can the mayor's office help this, this team out so we have revised plans for the next meeting? Okay? Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling B O A seven-zero-one-one-three-one-four-sixteen to four-twenty-two Geneva Avenue. Is Geneva Avenue here? Hold that off to the side. Calling the next case, calling B O A seven-zero-seven-five-two-one-sixteen-seventy-five Dorchester Avenue. This is to change life from a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. No work to be done. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. We held the butters meeting. Um, one or two butters showed up, both offering support. I believe this house was a two-family in the not-too-distant past, and it's just going reverting back to the two-family, so would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that means the kitchen on the third floor is coming out, then?
That's coming out. That's correct.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Cheatham, Councilor Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
The house, is it the house right on the corner of center, or is it the one beside it?
Right, right at the corner of center and Dorchester Avenue. I, I researched the, um, jacket at I S D, and at one point it was a three-family, and then it was converted to a two.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Want you to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
With B P D A design review.
There's no exterior work. It's all interior. It's already built out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Bazani, the plans are marked, uh, to remove that kitchen in the attic or wherever.
Yep. Any idea?
He's calling B O A six-nine-six-five-two-six, ten Brockton Street. This is the extended living space into the basement. The violation is Article sixty, Section seven, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article nine, Section one, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, good board. My name is Curtis Caesar, it's number ten Brockton Street.
Tell, tell us, tell us what you're proposing to do.
Proposing to extend the living space from the first floor into the basement.
And is this a one-family or a two-family?
It's a two-family.
It's a two-family? So tell us what will the basement space be used for?
Just for recreation, for, for extending for the family space.
Okay. Uh, how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate. What is the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
I think it's, uh, eighty-one, eighty-four, something like that. Can't remember the exact measurement.
Is that eight foot four or eighty-four inches?
Eighty-four inches.
Seven feet, okay. Thank you. It's adequate.
May I make a suggestion? Why don't we simply defer this until we have either confirmation that a community meeting took place and also at the same time, it would allow, uh, Mr. Hanson to provide us with dimension drawings to answer the question as to what are the unit sizes?
Okay, let's have a short deferral. May I have a motion, please? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We can get you in the August fifteenth meeting.
Okay, August fifteenth at eleven thirty, okay?
Calling a next case, calling BOA seven one nine five one seven, two sixty-five Hancock Street. This is a demo existing structure and building new construction, a three-family wood-framed building. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, parking is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, maximum stories is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Abraham Alvarez, uh, I live in eighty-nine Allen Avenue. I'm the contractor. Thank you.
Okay, so who owns the house? You own the house? Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, originally, well, we're proposing, uh, three unit, three unit, but we went to, uh, the community meeting and they denied the three unit.
They what?
They, they denied three unit, but they're willing to, uh, support the two unit.
Uh, what, what are you coming before us?
We, we're going along with them, proposing a two unit instead of three.
Do you have new plans for two units?
Not yet, because they just let us know last week.
Motion for the referral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The date, please?
We're into September.
September?
September twelfth.
Okay.
We have to have a set of plans that corresponds with the call.
Okay, can the mayor's office help this, this team out so we have revised plans for the next meeting? Okay? Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA seven zero one one three one four sixteen to four twenty-two Geneva Avenue. Is Geneva Avenue here? Hold that off to the side. Calling a next case, calling BOA seven zero seven five two one sixteen seventy-five Dorchester Avenue. This is a change from a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. No work to be done. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, I have a business address of fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass. It's oh-two-one-zero-nine. Today, we are here seeking relief to change the legal occupancy of the building from a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. It's a three-F, three-thousand sub-district, and their only violation is off-street parking is insufficient. Uh, I know Mr. Pizzani probably has a, a site plan, but there is no room to put off-street parking. Unit one will be about a thousand square feet, two bedrooms, one bath. Unit two will be approximately thirteen hundred square feet, two beds, one and a half bath. Uh, we had a commu, on June eighth, we had an abutters meeting sponsored by the mayor's office of neighborhood services, where a couple of the abutters came out and they were in support of the project. I'll pause at this time to take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Mr. Pizzani, how are the plans?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the mayor's office of neighborhood services. Would like to go on record in support. We held the abutters meeting. One or two abutters showed up, both offering support. I believe this house was a two-family in the not-too-distant past and is just going, reverting back to the two-family, so would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that means the kitchen on the third floor is coming out then?
That's coming out, that's correct.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Tiedem, Counsel Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Um, the house, is it the house right on the corner of center or is it the one beside it?
Right, right at the corner of center and Dorchester Avenue. I, I researched the, um, jacket at ISD and at one point it was a three-family and then it was converted to a two.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
With BPDA design review.
There's no exterior work.
There's no exterior work.
It's already built out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Pizzani, the plans are marked, uh, to remove that kitchen in the attic or wherever?
Yep.
He's calling BOA six nine six five two six ten Brockton Street. This is the extended living space into the basement. The violation is Article sixty, Section seven, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article nine, Section one, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, the board. Uh, my name is Curtis Caesar, it's number ten Brockton Street.
Tell, tell us, tell us what you're proposing to do.
Proposing to extend the living space from the first floor into the basement.
And is this a one-family or a two-family?
It's a two-family.
It's a two-family? So tell us what will the basement space be used for?
Just for recreation, for, for extending for the family space.
Okay. Uh, how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. What is the floor to ceiling height in the basement?
I think it's, uh, eighty-four, something like that. Can't remember the exact measurement.
Is that eight foot four or eighty-four inches?
Eighty-four inches.
Seven feet, okay, thank you. It's adequate.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Ruth Georges, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Walter Appwhite, on behalf of Counselor Tim McCarthy's office, we'd also like to go on record as support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of the Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Counsel, like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with, uh, BPDA design review.
There's no exterior work, is there?
No more, okay.
There's no exterior work, is there?
No exterior work.
I think you just like saying that.
I do, I do, I love saying that. Plus, I want Jeff to pay attention and make sure that he can correct me. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna change my motion to say that I'm, I'm gonna go for the grant of relief here.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Before I call, uh, the next case for ten thirty, I'm gonna call the eleven thirties and the rediscussions. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for eleven thirty? Counsel, address?
Eleven Fayette Street.
For the record. Calling it BOA six nine seven zero seven eight eleven Fayette Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Attorney Nick Zizula, McDermott, Quotient Miller, twenty-eight State Street, Suite eight zero two, uh, here in Boston. We were in front of the board on May twenty-third. We are still waiting on, uh, approval of plans from Boston Water and Sewer for the groundwater conservation. Uh, this was a fully, uh, fully-supported community project, but that's a technical requirement and, uh, those plans, I've been told, have just only recently been filed by the civil engineer. He was out for a significant period of time due to the holiday and it just hasn't gone in.
They're asking for a deferral?
Yes, ma'am.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Uh, go to September nineteenth.
Thank you.
September nineteenth?
Nineteenth, yes, eleven thirty.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for eleven thirty? Hearing now, go back to the ten thirty cases. Calling BOA seven zero five seven four seven thirty-three Johnson, John, Johnswood Road, sorry, Johnsonwood. This is to erect a new single-family home. The violation is Article sixty-seven, Section thirty-two, insufficient parking. Two unit, two unit is required. Article sixty-seven, Section nine, the insufficient lot size, five thousand square feet is required. Article sixty-seven, Section nine, insufficient front yard setback. Article sixty-seven, Section nine, insufficient rear yard setback, twenty-five feet is required. Name and address for the record, please.
Captain Anderson, fifty-one Heath Street, Boston, Mass.
Ethan Fay.
Oh, go ahead.
Ethan Fay, sixty Walter Street, Rosendale, Massachusetts.
Tell us quickly what's being proposed?
Yeah, we're proposing, uh, single-family residence on the lot, um, high-performance housing. It's actually adjacent to, uh, the client's, uh, parent's house and he grew up on the street, um, and it's kind of creating somewhat of a family compact. What we're proposing, um, is a compact, uh, sixteen-hundred square foot, a little over, uh, single-family that actually keeps the scale of the residence, uh, to the size of the lot. And the variance that we are seeking...
So just, uh, just tell us about, does this meet modal front yard?
Yeah, the modal front yard is, is tricky because the street Johnswood is actually a horseshoe shape, so when we went through the modal calculations, after you make the sharp turn past this existing lot, the houses jumped forward quite a bit and that's why it went to two-foot modal.
Okay.
We decided to push the building back to conform to the existing side of that street frontage to fit with the triangular layout.
And since this is new construction, why isn't there parking being proposed?
Uh, we have one spot that we're providing and it's actually using an existing curb cut and driveway and due to the, uh, slope of the site, we would have to do extensive, uh, remediation on the site to provide a second spot. And also, it's in the client's interest to maintain as much green space in the front yard as we can, uh, and in conversation with him and other abutters, it seems like parking really isn't an issue at the end.
Well, not now, but how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. Uh, I do have a question. All of the bedrooms are in what's called a basement, but is it really a basement? It's really, it would be a walkout if, if you could walk out.
Right, yeah, we decided to go with somewhat of an upside-down house scheme, so you enter on the living floor and go down to the bedroom spaces. And again, it's just taking advantage of the, of the site and trying to make the building smaller and conform to the lot there, rather than coming out of the ground too far.
Okay, any questions from the board?
And the elevation shows the one car in the carport and that's the only space available for parking.
Yeah, we could show tandem parking, but it actually pushes the, the car more into the front yard space, so that's why we're showing one car. So technically, you could fit two cars in that carport.
Any questions from the board?
Going to the, the frame of the, of the roof, because it looks like a second level there.
Uh, it's actually just the cathedral ceiling, so that, that first floor space is about a fourteen, thirteen-six interior space.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Murphy from the mayor's office of neighborhood services. Like to go on record of support. Uh, they had a well-attended community meeting, um, almost unanimous, uh, abutter support, despite opposition from the immediate abutter in the rear, so I would ask, uh, for design review for the rear yard setback.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Appwhite, Counsel, Tim McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record as support.
I'm Chris Fay, the owner of thirty-one Johnswood Road next door, and I support this proposal.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling a next case. Calling BOA six nine zero seven five five forty-one seventy-two to forty-one seventy-four Washington Street. This is a change, actually include a retail store, work to consist of an exterior and interior renovation. The violation is Article sixty-seven, Section twelve, insufficient rear yard setback, ten feet is required. Could you remove your cap, sir? Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Rich Young, forty-one seventy-four Washington Street, Rosendale.
Elizabeth Rosa, forty-one seventy-four Washington Street, Rosendale.
Mark Salzberg, forty-one seventy-two seventy-four Washington Street.
Mr. Fortune, what was the violation on that?
Uh, the violation is insuffi, I'm sorry, insufficient rear yard setback, ten feet is required.
So if there's ten foot is, feet is required, what are you, what is, what is the existing rear yard?
That's where this is like pretty much confused, because the setback of what they're calling out is a ten-by-ten area, thirty feet from the setback of the next building.
Mr. Pizzani, can you help, help, uh, solve this problem for us here?
Yeah, the building, um, is it, how much are you actually adding to the building?
Uh, we added a ten-by-ten square area on the side of the building.
On the side?
But it was halfway between building, there's still another thirty feet of existing building before you got to the next building.
But that ten-by-ten square area, in fact, was in alignment with something, wasn't it?
No. That's the public sidewalk on Murray's, Murray Hill Road.
Okay, so the area that you are extending on is adjacent to the sidewalk?
Yes.
And so what's the proposed use of this space?
Um, that's where this gets a little confusing. I already submitted drawings, did a long form, installed that whole building, renovated the whole building. We closed the permit out, I got occupancy, it was signed off, then the, this is Sam's convenience store, they rented the forty-one seventy-four side of it, which contains that little ten-by-ten area. Then it got flagged after I closed out the permit that I already built.
So this is a convenience store and what is that space used for?
It's a retail store, um...
No, I mean, what's the, the side?
It's a fashion, there's a restroom there, there's a hallway to the bathroom area. No one really goes in that area, but...
Okay. Okay. While we're looking at this, at the plans, anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Murphy from the mayor's office of neighborhood services. Uh, this is a fairly complex issue that was going on, uh, for quite some time. Started with, uh, initial applications that were, um, applied at the wrong address, which was six to ten Murray Hill Road, um, and per conversations with inspectional services, uh, they reallocated to new application to have it, um, coincide with what they're actually doing at Washington Street. But as the developers had mentioned, um, the work had already been complete, so mayor's office would like to go on record of opposition just due to, um, not setting precedent of , uh, disingenuous building practices going forward. But, um, to consider that, you know, there are currently inhabiting businesses in the building at this time.
What are the businesses in the building?
Uh, Cricket Wireless and Sam's Food.
And Wood?
And Sam's Food Club.
Okay.
Is this directly across from the Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes.
The old Sugar Bakery there?
Uh, no, Sugar Bakery is the fourteen-seventy, I think it was the, it's a gym.
Okay.
It was...
You're right at the intersection there.
If I may speak, I'm just the owner of the building and, um, I, I just wanted permits for it and do a good project for the community. I don't know if you have the ads built and what we did over there. Yeah, that, that's why I asked, because I've been by it and it's already built. Right, uh, we have, we got B R, B R A approval for the facade and, um, it is a condo situation. The building behind us, that's where the mix-up is, the condo association. And I have letters of, um, support from both director abutters, if you want to see that.
Thank you.
From both sides.
Thank you. So how long have they been open? They've been, the building's been turned over, correct?
Correct.
How long?
I would say it was turned over in January.
January this year?
Yes.
So the business is already there and what we're looking at, what, what precisely are we looking at? Is this the, the rear, the, the ten-foot, the ten-foot enclosed, uh, courtyard, is that what we're looking at?
Exactly.
Less of violation.
Okay, so what would it take to remove that courtyard? I know people don't want to do that and I understand that you had all, you had all the building permits in place.
Yes.
You had everything in place.
Yes.
Is that used to put a dumpster in? What's, what's that space used for?
That space was, that contained the two gas meters to the building, because it used to be a restaurant, a Haitian restaurant, so that, you know, commercial-sized six-inch mains coming into that little courtyard.
What is it used for now, though?
It's, it's just a straight shot all the way down the street. The original drawings, when I submitted the drawings for the long-form application, contained the elevation drawings that show the courtyard being closed in, and then on the actual sectional drawing that shows roof ramping to be two-by-twelve or, I believe it was two-by-five.
And is it enclosed with a fence?
No. No, this is all stucco, brand-new. Uh, during the time of construction, the only thing I was asked to do was change the addresses, because they didn't like forty-one seventy-four A and B, because it was confusing for public safety, so they found an address usable for forty-one seventy-two. Then before that, they asked us to do some architectural detail changes to the corners and the facade to make, you know, make it look a little nicer than the original drawing. Uh, no, during that whole timeframe, none of this ever came up.
Mr. Pizzani, I'm relying on you since you have the plans.
Yes, I, I, I mean, seriously, the issue here is purely administrative. I'm gonna make a motion for...
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA seven one six one nine zero eight forty Beacon Street. This is a change from retail to liquor store in existing condition. The violation is Article sixty-one, Section ten, liquor store is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Doug Gordon, twenty-one Daniels Road, please, Framingham, Mass.
Tell us what's being proposed?
So we're proposing to open up a new retail packet store in the eight forty Beacon Street, which is, uh, forbidden use. Right now, it's retail and we'd like to have, um, a retail packet store.
The, um, what's the cross street on Beacon Street?
Uh, um, I, Irenel, Irenel, uh, and Beacon.
What's the street again?
It's the old bicycle shop.
Okay, so it's by the BU campus on, on, no...
Autobahn.
Autobahn.
It's Autobahn Circle, yes.
It's Autobahn Circle, okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Yeah, there'll be, uh, no construction, it's all set for, for retail and, uh, just for, um, information, there has been, uh, two packet stores throughout the years, one to the two blocks down and, and one that was three blocks to the other direction in that area.
Um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Justal Guerrero with the mayor's office of neighborhood services, we would like to go on record in support. We did hold an abutters meeting and they've met with the civic association who is also in support. At the abutters meeting, there were several concerns just in regards to traffic on Beacon Street, um, and they proposed possibly putting it off to the side street. And then, other than that, no other concerns have been raised.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna go back to the last case for ten thirty. Is Geneva Avenue here? Geneva Avenue's not here. I'm gonna make a motion for denial of our prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm gonna call the first case for eleven thirties rediscussion. The two companion cases, BOA six six two 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 four one ninety-one Condor Street. Is Condor Street here? There's a companion case, BOA six two 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 eleven Condor Street. This is for one ninety-one Condor. Construct new nine-unit residential building with eleven parking spaces. The violation is Article fifty-three, Section eight, the MFR is forbidden in a two-family sub-district. Article fifty-three, Section nine, insufficient rear yard setback. Article fifty-three, Section nine, excessive FAR. Article fifty-three, Section nine, number of stories allowed, ha, height has been exceeded. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-four, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, insufficient parking. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-seven point three, traffic visibility across corners, three and five special provisions for corner lots. This is for two eleven Condor Street. To build a new fourteen-unit building with fourteen parking spaces. The violation is Article fifty-three, Section nine, excessive FAR. Article fifty-three, maximum height allowed is exceeded. Article fifty-three, front yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-three, rear yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-four, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, insufficient parking. And Article fifty-two, Section eight, MFR is forbidden in a two-family sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. The cast, the cast seventy-five Arlington Street, Boston. Legal counsel, the proponent, with me is Joe Hassel, who is the developer. Legal counsel for the proponent. With me is Joe Hassel, who is the developer.
So please, did this go through an Article eighty process?
It did. The reason we were deferred last time is because although these are separate projects, not on contiguous lots, the B P D A asked the applicant to voluntarily submit to small project review, because there's a lot of activity on this particular stretch of Condor Street, including B P D A-owned parcels. And they wanted us to sort of set the tone for future development. So we voluntarily agreed to comply with small project review and received B P D A board approval on June fifteen, two thousand seventeen, for this project.
Were any changes made during the Article eighty process that might have affected the violations?
No changes were made that would impact the violation, so the refusal letters are as stated.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Uh, drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Was one of the reasons that the project had been broken up was to avoid dealing with the issue of affordable housing?
No, the projects really weren't broken up. One is at two eleven Condor Street, and the other is about ten houses down, so that wasn't the issue. But nonetheless, as part of the small project review process, indeed, there are three I D two units being provided for the two projects as a whole. So thirteen percent of the total number of units being constructed, which is twenty-three, will be set aside under.
So thirteen percent of the aggregate, number two?
Thirteen percent of the aggregate for both projects are being set aside as a fourth. If I could submit the B P D A board memo for the record, please.
Yes, and why are there so many violations? It seems like you've had almost every violation.
It's an old industrial area that is becoming residential more quickly, so this may be one of those areas that is suitable for a planning study perhaps as it becomes more residential. The existing zoning is ill-suited to what is actually transpiring in that area.
Okay, any further questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Claudia Carrera from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. There was no opposition during the abutters meeting. Also, the Eagle Hills Civic Association voted in support of this proposal.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. We have City Councilor Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Ferris, representing the Carpenters Union, would like to go on record in opposition to this project, please.
Thank you. So do you have your team assembled yet to do the work, the construction work?
We do not.
Okay, do you have a motion, please? Do you want to expand on that response?
In what sense?
Okay, may I have a motion?
None of the proposals have been put out to bid or anything of that sort, if that's questioned at this time.
Motion for the lie.
Madam Chair, if I could speak. Yeah, I think if there are concerns of this body on any level, I would ask for a deferral rather than a denial. This has gone through the Article eighty process, and it has B P D A board support and approval. So I would recommend, rather than a denial, that we do a deferral.
Would you accept that as a motion?
I will withdraw my motion and make a motion to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May we have this back at the next meeting, please?
Next meeting, please.
So it'll be July twenty-fifth?
July twenty-five?
Yep.
Eleven thirty A M?
Eleven thirty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling B O A seven zero seven nine seven two eight sixteen Saratoga Street. This is two new bathrooms, new window and roof. And violation of Article fifty-three, Section nine, the floor ratio is excessive. Basement and attic areas are new occupied areas. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Cornelius Holter, eight sixteen Saratoga Street.
Okay, just for the record, we had seen this project at the subcommittee meeting last month. The applicant was here at the last meeting, however, due to the fire alarm process, we were not able to hear this case. And the only reason we did not hear it at the subcommittee is that because it's not owner-occupied.
Well, I would like to explain that.
Goodness, so please tell us what you're proposing.
Um, I'd like to add two new bathrooms and a window and a roof.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Your drawings are adequate.
Uh, will you be, what is going to be proposed in the basement?
Um, there was a family room there, and then one make a master bedroom.
In the attic?
No, that's in the basement.
In the basement, there's a family room and a master, and what's in the attic?
Um, two bedrooms.
Okay, what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Um, I want to make that master bedroom and add the new bathroom. And on the third floor, I want to make a one-bedroom, the bathroom, a bathroom.
And what is the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Seven feet, eight inches.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Claudia Carrera from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. There was no opposition during the abutters meeting.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling B O A six six four seven six three eight Clifford Street. I'm sorry, yeah, eight Clifford Street. There is a companion case, B O A six six four seven six two one Waverly Street. This is for Clifford Street. This is to construct, two eighty, two ninety Warren Street, construct a five-story mixed-use commercial residential building of approximately eighty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine square feet. There will be seventy-four underground parking spaces on a thirty-two thousand square foot lot. Occupancy to be at fifty-one residential units and offices. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, lot area is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the floor ratio is excessive. Article fifty, the building height is excessive. Article fifty, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article fifty, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, side yard is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, rear yard is insufficient. And this is for one Waverly. This is two eighty, two ninety Warren Street, construct a mixed-use commercial residential of approximately fifty-six thousand square feet, including twenty-eight underground parking spaces on a thirty-eight thousand square foot lot. Occupancy to be a restaurant, coffee shop, and forty-four residential units with underground parking. Violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, lot area is insufficient. Article fifty, floor ratio is excessive. Article fifty, building height is excessive. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, building height, number of stories is excessive. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty, front yard is insufficient. Article fifty, side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, member of the board, my name is Joseph Feaster from the law firm of McKenzie and Associates, one eighty-three State Street, Boston, Mass., zero two one zero nine. To my immediate right is Edgar Carrera from the Cruz Construction Company. He is the project manager on this, for this project. And setting up the board chair is our architect, Michael Washington, from Michael Washington Architects, Inc.
So Mr. Feaster, tell us, please, what's being proposed? This, I assume, went through an Article eighty process?
Yes, it did, Madam Chair. This is a development that, well, as I mentioned, Cruz Development Corporation is the developer of this project. It's, and there is going to be built in two phases. Phase one will be a four-story building consisting of fifty-one units of new and family, new family and elderly residential housing units. There will also be a seven thousand two hundred and eighty-four square foot commercial space to be occupied by Cruz Development Construction and Management Staff. They're gonna be moving their office to that particular site. And there will be seventy-four parking spaces in a two-level garage. Phase two of this project will be a five-story building consisting of forty-four units of residential housing. And with that, there is discussion as to what type of housing, whether it be elderly or not. Not elderly housing, which will take place there, but that's being in discussion both with the city as well as with the neighborhood, and also financing consideration. So that second phase will, as to the particular type of housing that will take, what the units will be. It will be housing, yes, but what the units, whether they will be elderly or not, it will be, is still under discussion. There will be a four thousand fifty square foot coffee shop and restaurant, and there'll be twenty-eight parking spaces in a surface-level garage. The property will consist of one, two, and three-bedroom units, tenant's storage area, and garage parking. The project went before the Boston Civic Design Commissioner was approved on December sixth, two thousand sixteen. Completed its Article eighty large project review on December sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, before the Boston Planning and Development Agency. The project had several meetings in the community, one held by B P D A, Boston Planning and Development Agency, on October twenty-seventh at the Roxbury Boys and Girls Club to discuss the project's P N F and development plan. On November first, there was a meeting held by B P D A, held with the Impact Advisory Group meeting, which was held at the Roxbury Boys and Girls Club. And there was recently a meeting, I don't know the exact date, Mr. Carrera could talk about that, that was within the last couple of weeks, that was also held with the neighborhood, because there were some questions and concerns that the neighborhood has, and Mr. Carrera can give you more detail on that. Mr. Fortune, the secretary, already spoke to the variances that are being sought, so I will leave it there. If you'd like Mr. Washington to walk you through the project, we'd more than happy to do so.
So tell us about the fifty-one unit building, which is Clifford Street, actually, both buildings. Tell us the breakdown of the units, and the sizes of the units, and if, how many affordables will be provided?
Well, actually, all of the units are affordable, up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. There is a set aside for very low-income families at thirty percent of the area median. And we consider this to be workforce housing. Some will be tax credit units at not exceeding sixty percent of the area median income. There are, in the first phase, there are. I'm looking for the one, but you got it. Yeah, first phase is fifty-one units, forty-four two-bedrooms, four one-bedrooms, and two three-bedrooms.
Two three-bedrooms, and the sizes of the, what, forty-four, how many two-bedrooms?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, and the general, general average sizes of those units?
The average, again, please?
Average of the units.
Average size, the average size. The two-bedrooms are already a thousand square feet. Three-bedrooms move up about thirteen hundred square feet. And one-bedrooms are, like, seven hundred square, seven fifty, I think.
And do you meet the parking requirement on these?
Yes.
Yes, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are excellent.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Josh McFadden, we would like to go on record in support. There have been many community meetings on this project, and the community as a whole is in support. We do understand there isn't a butler concerned about a few issues, including rodents, parking, and shadows. So we would ask, if approved, that the developer continues to work with them. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Justin Brown, Councilor Jackson's office, and he would like to give his support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Ferris, representing the Carpenters Union, would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ryan Lendergen from the Department of Neighborhood Development. I'm here to speak in support of the project. This project is on, includes D and D land and D and D subsidy, and we are in support of the project.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Wheeler, and I'm here on behalf of Roxbury Path Forward Neighborhood Association. And we've been meeting about this project since about two thousand and twelve, when D and D first wanted to offer it. So we, you know, worked with some items that were in the R F P. We also met with the B R A. We also met independently with Cruz Development on the project. And that included people that lived on Clifford Street, on Waverly Street, people that are director butters on Waverly Street. And they're just very excited about this project, because it brings companies that will actually hire people in the community, both during the construction phase and afterwards. It also would take this blighted spot that has been abandoned for decades and turn it into housing. And so we, I just want to say again that, you know, with a few reservations, which the attorney talked about, people in that neighborhood are just overwhelmingly in support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Friends, pal, I live on Clifford Street. We've been there for quite a few years. Our kids grew up on Clifford. And I'd like to say that we're very fortunate to have this quality of building proposed for our neighborhood, because we've been driving by these lots for years that have been neglected, presently with trash dumped all over the place. And it's something that, as a driver on Clifford Street, I go by every day, and it's depressing. You know, we pay taxes, we expect the same as others in the neighborhood. This has been proposed a long time, so, you know, we have been hoping that at some point, we would see something positive going on in the corner. And I hope that the board would recommend that this get going right away, so that we can get rid of all the blight. I see it every day, and the proposal is first-class, it's been first-class, they have been very flexible. And the fact that they're owner-occupied, to me, is a bonus where if anybody in the neighborhood has any concerns, the front doors are there at least forty hours a week. So I, and my wife and family, and everybody I spoke to on the street, would like to say we back and hope that you affirm.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good morning, my name is Patricia Tellus Warren. I live at sixteen Clifford Street, and just to show you, this is my house. I am the person most directly affected by this. I've lived in that house for twenty-eight years and six weeks. And it is extremely upsetting for me. I'm an attorney, but I generally advocate for other people, not for myself. And it's extremely upsetting for me to get to be sixty-four years old and find that I am enormously stressed and awake at night, because I've lived there, and I've looked out at one level for twenty-eight years. And now, instead of saying, we're gonna build one level or build two levels, no, we're gonna build four or five. And that's overwhelming for the distance between my house and that property line. Right now, if you stand like this, there's my house wall, and that's the wall of the property. And I understand they're gonna tear it down. I understand they're gonna move it ten to fifteen, ten to twelve feet further. But the shadows that will be cast by that are just unbelievable. I do not think they have looked at it at all levels. I've lived there. I actually, within the past two years, have started fixing up my house. And one of the things I did is I put a window on that side, by that wall, an extra window to get the sunlight. I raised the window to get the sunlight. I don't keep curtains up in my house, except for where you have the living space, actual bedroom space, so I can catch all the light. And the idea that now you're gonna put up four floors, which means I wasted my time fixing up what the things I fixed up. And I'm not, I'm gonna be living completely overwhelmed by destruction. One of the other problems I've noticed when it's the one floor, is that, of the building that I've looked out over for twenty-eight years, is that when it's high snow, all of that comes down and falls right to my house, which the back of it goes down. So I'm concerned about water and overflow. I am absolutely concerned about the fact that fifty-one underground two-level parking are gonna be right there with the entrance coming in or the exit coming out, I'm not sure which, they've changed it, right next to my house. So first of all, building, taking down the wall and building all this construction, which the first phase is two years, the second phase is another two years, the noise is gonna be unbelievable. The parking ventilation, I already have allergies. One of the things I want to do to continue to be in the workforce is to bring my eighty-nine-year-old mother to stay with me. And she has allergies, so we're gonna be right next to the parking garage with the noise and the allergies. So my comfort and peace and enjoyment of my property is being taken away. And far as I can hear, it's from, it's to have the place cleaned up and made pretty. And I'm saying. And I'm saying, I think that can be done less than putting ninety-five units next to me with fifty-one levels of underground parking, which actually will be turning out to be seventy-four when you add in the Waverly Street. With all due respect, this is not unanimously agreed by the abutters on Clifford Street. With all due respect, Mr. Sparrow lives halfway to the street. I live right there. My next-door neighbor, eighteen, I thought she would be here this morning. She's against it. That person at nineteen says there's too many units. The person at twenty-one is against it. The person at twenty-seven is against it. So, I don't know where all of this, no one is against it, is not true. I also just want to mention, having lived in Boston all of this time, the proposal they have, especially with me being an abutter, I think someone should have sent something directly to my house or come by my house or come by the neighborhood houses to talk to people. It's very convenient to say we hold neighborhood meetings, but when the people most affected don't show up, then I think you have an extra duty to go out and make sure they do. And that has not been done. And like, for instance, hearings, notice of hearings to this case, I didn't get these. I was here the last time, and I knew it was rescheduled. I didn't get a rescheduled notice. My neighbors didn't get rescheduled notices. So, the notices for the hearings don't go out on time, people don't show up. And the people that have stood here and said, "This is unanimous," with the whole neighborhood is in approval of it, is not true. I was just at a neighborhood meeting last night. That was not true.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Just to quickly respond to you is that our practice is that since these, that we do not send out notices on rehearings. Because there are a couple of ways that people know that it's been rescheduled. One is from people who have been here, who know. And second, since the meeting is being livestreamed and is also repeated constantly on TV, I think that's another way of knowing what happened if you're interested. So, there's a couple of ways. So, that's to address our, the Board of Appeal process. The other processes I cannot speak to. But please have a seat.
I just want to mention that I had said in a letter, I don't know if you guys have read some of it.
Well, let's check, and then we'll get back to you. In the meantime, yes, I'll have a question, and then we will have the, a response from the team.
Yes, you already said that, but some of, what's the person? The total number of units is?
I'm sorry.
Total ninety-five. A total of ninety-five units in the two phases combined.
And some are ownership and some are rental?
No, they're all rental.
All rental, okay.
Well, I think that referring to owner occupancies, that the crews, the crews companies will be occupied. Two floors.
Yeah.
So, the questions, so can you please respond to the question by the abutter about the distance of the building from her property? And I guess the sense of being overwhelmed, having this horseshoe-shaped structure around it. They are very attractive buildings, but you can understand the concerns of abutters.
Yeah, the, before Mr. Washington, if you, if I might, Madam Chair, let me just adjust. I know Ms. Tellis as well, and for a long, long time. And I can, I'm sympathetic to the fact of that she and whether the representation of the other neighbors is such that they were in opposition, we have no way of knowing that for sure because we have not received anything from them. And I understand it turns our need and turns our close proximity. I have lived in that neighborhood up until ninety-eight, not directly related, next to this development, but I'm up and down Warren Street and Clifford Street and those streets often. And as Mr. Sparrow said, I've looked at this property over the years since coming here to Boston in sixty-seven, have seen this property being in that condition ever since the movie theater, I guess that was even predated me, was there. I think to her concerns, yes of yes, there will be the shadows that will, you know, there's no way of denying that. And Mr. Washington will address the distance issue from her respective property. Water and overflow, certainly, we will be taking the mitigation to ensure that, and that anything from that building will not adversely affect her particular property. I don't know, and maybe we can address the ventilation issue for the garage. Maybe Mr. Carrera can address that particular issue just to mitigate some of her concerns about the fumes. I recognize that that will be there. And obviously, there is the mitigation plan, which the, which BPDA requires, both in terms of rodents and noise and things of nature. Certainly, there will be some during the construction. And I'm certain that my client will do as much as they can to notify people and to mitigate that. Obviously, the construction will be taking place after a certain hours. I think the city requirement is three PM is the latest, but certainly wouldn't be taking place in the evening. So, I think the history that the crews, crews construction has had in this community and the types of developments, the concern, as was mentioned by Mr. Sparrow and others, the hiring of individuals from the community to do the job bodes well for the type of relationship that the crews development corporation has had with this community. And we'll definitely be taking into account the concerns of Ms. Tellis, and we'll be addressing her throughout this particular process as well as Ms. Wheeler and the other residents on Clifford and Waverly Street. So, with that, I would just say, Mr. Washington can address your distance piece, and then Mr. Carrera can possibly speak to you about what's being done with respect to the garage and ventilation.
Thank you, thank you. The, we agree with those comments. And we've taken a great deal of effort to make sure that we are impacting the neighbors as little as possible. Crews company, working with DND, working with the BRA and the City Design Commission. And that's been one of our concerns all along. This particular house is about, is three to four feet off of the property line, and we are, the building is another ten feet away.
So, that's approximately a fourteen-feet distance between the buildings?
That's right, between the buildings. And the...
Not existing today.
I understand.
The existing building is on the property line.
Right.
So, it's less than three feet.
I understand. So, I understand, but the new building, the proposed building and the, and the abutter at Clifford Street, though, will be fifteen?
About thirteen to fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet, okay.
Now, is that between buildings or from lot line?
That's between building and the...
What is it from the lot line?
The ten feet, we're ten feet from the property.
You're ten feet, okay.
On both, both streets. And the house on the other street...
Can you address Clifford? So, are these parking lots on Clifford surface parking or are they garage?
The houses themselves?
No, 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 the parking. The parking is on, the parking on Clifford Street is garage, two-level garage.
With one level underground.
Okay, okay.
It's all garage. And again, when we went through the City Design Commission, we're very strict about making sure that the ventilation was proper, and it's mostly open. And so, there should be no accumulation of fumes because it's open on all sides. And the fact that we have the two-level of parking, we originally started out with one-level of parking. And the additional parking in the project was a result of really the neighbors' expression of a desire for additional parking. And so, we have two levels. The lower level is completely underground, and the first level is, in fact, there, but it's open.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I want to address one, ma'am.
Oh, go ahead.
One other thing I wanted to say was that the sun studies, we did numerous sun studies on the site, as required by the BRA. And the building, although we are moving from a one-story building, probably fourteen feet high, to that side of the building, it's forty, it'll be forty-eight feet high, we're further away. The sun studies indicate that that particular house, so the houses on both streets on that side, they're orientated from north to south. So, the sun passes from east to west, and there's almost no, there's no shadow on those properties from the, from the building.
Okay.
And if it is, it's a very small piece.
Any last questions from the board?
Mr. Washington, the opening, the present opening between the two buildings is what, right now?
It's three to four feet.
Less than four.
Never gone on property measure.
Because that's because the existing building is on a problem. We're ten feet. We're moving basically what is now a building on the property line, and it should be a building ten feet.
Further away, that's right. So, there's fourteen between, feet between.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, just to the record, we do not have the letter, ma'am. So, we can put that into record.
Thank you.
That's fine, that's fine.
And there's also a response from Michael Kuzo, who is the project right director.
Michael Kuzo?
Project right, it's the neighborhood association. Do you get that?
We have that one.
Yeah, thank you. So, may I have a motion, please?
I can make a motion to approve the project for continuing BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I just add something to that?
Sure.
Can we have special attention? Can we pay special attention to the neighbor at sixteen Clifford Street? To make sure that she's completely involved and that, you know, we take into consideration any adverse effects that we can make easier on her?
Absolutely.
Actually, on the, also Waverly, I mean, the people. So, you just continued your process.
We would do that in any event. So, certainly, we're taking to that. May not satisfy all of the concerns, but we're trying to definitely address them.
Thank you, Councilor.
So, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso. You're all set, good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA six-six-four-seven-six-two-one, I'm sorry, BOA six-four-six-seven-two-eight-twenty-six Walton Street. This is off-street parking for two vehicles. The violation is Article nine, section one. Building is a two-F, two-family, and a one-F, seven-thousand zone. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, I'm... The owner is not here today because her husband had health issue. So, she, last time I was with her, this time I supposed to take her, and she asked me to go here.
What is the name and address?
My name is Kukho, and I'm living in eighty-three Kentwood Street in Dorchester.
Okay, and why were you deferred the last time? Why was she deferred the last time?
The last time, Mr. David Carter said that we should have the, the association meeting.
Did you have the meeting?
David told me that we have no meeting in December, and it should be okay because we already have the abutter meeting already. So, it should be...
And what happened at the abutter meeting?
Everybody's support.
Okay. So, you're proposing for two parking spaces?
Yes.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
We do not have any grounds.
So, can I ask?
Okay, go ahead.
Again?
Yes, please.
Has this project been brought forward before? Is this a project that we've previously seen, not for the two parking spots, but is this the project that we've previously seen for additions?
No, just a pocket.
This court didn't see anything else on this? Did they see an attic, a basement, addition in the backyard?
Not at all, not at all.
And so...
The reason, the reason that she wanted to ask the board because she bought this two-family for her daughter, just get married, just get a baby to live there. But the reason, just last year, her husband just got a stroke, and her daughter is the one who take care of the father in the morning to take him to rehab.
Okay, hold on, hold on, right there. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
The issue is that it's front yard parking. Now, it could be arranged to do two tandems and get rid of majority of front yard. But one of the problems would be that there's a utility pole that they would have to move. But that's, would have to be done.
And is, is there parking on that side of the street?
Yes, there is.
There is parking there?
Yeah.
Okay. And is that curb cut existing? Or is that a new curb cut you want to put in?
A new curb cut.
A new curb cut? And there's no way of relocating that curb cut in anyway?
Well, if they did tandem parking, the curb cut would be, have to be smaller. That should allow them to save a tree that is there.
And the utility pole?
No, the utility pole is, the utility pole is in alignment with the front of the house. The front of the house is set back twenty-five feet. So, it's strange because the utility pole is actually on their property.
Well, that's not so strange. That's all over Rosendale.
But what it would suggest is, it's possible to work it out with BPDA to develop a plan for, which shows two tandem spaces and push, pushing.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Ruth Georges, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Cheatham, Councilwoman Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant relief requested for two parking spaces with the following clause, that the appellant work with BPDA.
PTD, yeah.
I was almost going to say BPDA.
That's my line.
And that the, rather than two cars side by side, that tandem parking, the first car be driven back as high as it can possibly go.
Do you need BPDA review, just so that...
Yeah, and Bob, when you make and reach an agreement with them, if you could give notice of void with that as a document.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Have a conversation with Bob right there, okay? Now, to the next part of the agenda.
Madam Chair, this is a subcommittee. We unfortunately couldn't do it last month's meeting, so we're going to take care of it today. Call each one into the record. Calling BOA seven-zero-four-five-zero-seven-sixty-seven Rutherford Avenue. This is a second and third-floor bedroom addition. It was approved with BRA, BPDA. Next case was BOA seven-zero-seven-eight-eight-six-one-H Street Place.
Bob, can you take the conversation outside the room? Thanks.
One-H, H Street Place, it was approved One H, H Street Place, it was approved with the extended living space into a single-family residential. Uh, case BOA six-seven-six-zero-five-six-eleven Sagamore Street, it was to extend living space to existing single-family residential, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA seven-zero-one-two-seven-four-twenty-one Port Norfolk Street, this was an ex- it was an extension, a proposed dormer addition and replace, uh, previous deck, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA seven-one-two-five-zero-six-sixty-eight Cliftondale Street was to extend living space into the basement, it was approved. Case BOA six-nine-three-seven-five-three-seventy-one-to-seventy-three Green Street, it was to add tandem parking spaces, was approved. BOA six-nine-four-eight-six-five-forty-three-forty, forty-three-thirty-seven-to-forty-three-forty-one Washington Street, it was to change lives from a travel agency to beauty shop, it was approved, but to hold, provide plants, uh, plans were stamped by the architect. Case BOA seven-zero-five-three-six-nine-forty-three Minton Road renovation addition to include a renovated half-bath was approved with BPDA. Case BOA six-eight-two-nine-one-four-three-eleven-to-three-fifteen Belgrade Avenue, this was a, a doggy daycare, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA seven-one-one-three-one-zero-twenty-seven Casper Street, this was to remove the existing second floor and build a new second floor with full height, it was approved with BPDA. And BOA six-six-one-one-two-one-one-forty-five Corey Street was denied without prejudice for a no-show. Next case, BOA six-eight-three-two-nine-five-seventeen Brookfield Street was to finish and remodel the existing basement space, it was approved with proviso, with the proviso. Uh, and then the case, the last case, BOA six-six-five-seven-five-nine-one-forty-five-to-one-forty-five A East Berkeley Street was in addition to the first floor and back of the restaurant, which was approved. I'm gonna find out what that proviso was on Brookfield. So, the basement would not be converted into an independent dwelling unit. That concludes the subcommittee meeting, um, on June twenty-second of two thousand seventeen.
May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to concur with the recommendation of the subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, those, those recommendations have been approved. The meeting is now adjourned.